If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The Chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the Public Comments section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the Board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Thank you very much, and welcome to the May 21th Regular County Commission Meeting. We welcome you all. If you have not filled a card and you plan on speaking, please do so before we get started. We'll have an invocation this morning by Pastor Brian Moore. Pastor, are you here? Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Let's pray. Well, Heavenly Father, thank you for your presence here and what we get to do together. And we just thank you for wisdom from heaven. You say you'll give it to us liberally if we'll ask for it, and so we just ask now for wisdom from heaven. And we're thankful for your peace, that surpass all understanding. God, would you just be present? Thank you for leading and guiding this community and our leaders. And for your blessing in this community that makes rich and adds no sorrow to it. We trust you now, and we lean on you to lead and to guide and to rear your people. Would you do it your way? In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, very much. Commissioner Tobias, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 12th, 24 regular April, regular meeting and the April 4th, 24 zoning meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Resolutions, awards, and presentations. Resolution honoring the academic and athletic achievements of Jada Williams Goins, District Three. Commissioner Tobias, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And with your permission, I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Thank you. A resolution on behalf of Brevard County Board of County Commissioners honored Jada Williams Goins. Whereas Jada Williams Goins is a senior at Rockledge High School, and whereas Jada Williams Goins is, has a history of significant impressive accomplishments and awards, and whereas these successes clearly show her dedication, intelligence, commitment, determination, and passion, which are necessary to attain such high levels of performance, is commendable in its own right. And whereas Jada Williams Goins' academic accomplishments includes 4.4 weighted GPA and a 3.8 unweighted GPA, placing her in the top 20% of her senior class. And whereas her coursework, including Cambridge program classes, and whereas Jada Williams Goins is completing high school and an honor student also while having concurrently earned an associate's degree from Eastern Florida State College. And whereas Jada Williams Goins also earned certifications in Microsoft and small business entrepreneurship. And whereas she's also demonstrated excellent leadership skills as the BSU founder and president. And whereas, in addition to stellar academic performance, Jada Williams Goins also has excelled as an athlete. Whereas she is the Junior Olympics 80-meter hurdle champion, the Sunshine State Games champion in the 100 hurdles, 200 hurdles, a two-time middle school champion, an eight-time Coast Conference champion, a seven-time district champion, the state runner-up in the 100-meter hurdles, and the Rockledge High School and Brevard County record holder for the 100-meter hurdles and the 400-meter hurdles. And whereas elite-level athletic performance and documented academic prowess has led to a track scholarship to the University of Memphis, now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of Commissioners takes this opportunity to honor the achievement and look forward to the future success of Jada Williams Goins, who's a source of pride to the county and shows promise as a future leader. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day of May 2024. I'd like to ask her to come up unless you want to vote for it first, but a motion.
Yeah, well, direct a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second. All right. Thank you very much. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Jada, where are you?
Jada, and I'd like to point out her mother, Chantel Williams, is here. And I've been told that her wonderful father, Councilman.
Come on up, Jada. Jada, before you get started, I need you to help me a little bit with some training for speed, because a lot of the decisions that I make around here, I got to run out of here real fast. So you're going to have to help me out a little bit, will you? Okay.
Your dad said he wanted to be here, but I guess he's at a VPK graduation, so he's got so much success in the family, he's got a split time. Before you get up there, will you show us how high a hurdle is on your...
Probably like right here.
Stars and garters.
Wow.
That's pretty darn amazing. Come up here and it's, we're lucky to have you.
Yeah.
We're sorry to lose you to Memphis, but we're lucky to have you now.
All right. You got the mic?
I have to say something.
You don't have to, but would love for you to, because I'll tell you what, you're impressive.
I'd just like to thank you all for recognizing me at this meeting.
Thank you so much.
Get a picture? John? You want to take a picture with Jada?
Sure. I just wanted to point out, you have a wonderful father who does great work for the citizens of Cocoa, and it's, it's great working with him. And clearly, he's got some, some great kiddos, so.
Thanks.
All right. We'll just get a picture here, Jada. Commissioner Tobias will be down there with you. Wow, that's impressive. Thank you so much. Commissioner Felton, I believe you have the next resolution.
Chief Voltaire.
Hold on one second. Is that your mother, Jada? Would you like to get a picture up here with your mom, too? Real fast, if you don't mind? Think that's important. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
I apologize, John. I just didn't recognize that she was out there. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
All right. Chief Voltaire.
I sure hope there's no fires going on anyplace.
I have a resolution for Emergency Medical Services Week. So go ahead and read that and pass it, and then Chief will speak.
All right. Now we're going to do the hoochie coochie there? You've got that going? All right.
Here we go. Whereas emergency medical professionals and volunteers provide medical care to victims of sudden life-threatening injuries and illness, often under stressful conditions and in high-risk situations to save lives. And whereas 2024, marking the 50th anniversary of National Emergency Medical Service Week theme, EMS honoring our past forging our future, reminds us that Brevard's, Brevard County's residents and guests benefit daily from the knowledge, skill, and judgment of paramedics, emergency medical technicians, firefighters, dispatchers, educators, administrators, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, and others who encompass the emergency medical services system. And whereas, emergency medical personnel must rapidly assess, manage, and effectively provide care in unpredictable situations requiring life and death judgments. And whereas, Brevard County's EMS teams unselfishly serve on the front line of health care when responding to man-made and natural disasters at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas, a recognition is due for emergency medical services system for its accomplishments and contributions to improve public welfare through health care, medical transportation, injury prevention, education, disaster response, homeland security, and other initiatives that reduce health care costs and save lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby unanimously proclaim the week of May 19th, 2024 through May 25th, 2024 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 21st day of May 2024. And with that, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay. Pat, it's up to you, man.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you very much for recognizing Brevard County workers for EMS Week and appreciation. Again, we appreciate you all and the support that you give us and allowing us to do the things that we need to do to make Brevard safer. I'd like to turn it over to Chief Dominguez, our EMS chief, just to let him say thank you and appreciation for what we allow him to do to stay on the cutting edge and increase our survivability rates in Brevard County. And that's our main goal in keeping our community safer and doing things to, you know, keep everybody happy and healthy in the county. So, Chief Dominguez.
Thanks, Pat. Chief.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. We truly thank you for your ongoing support. I would also like to take the opportunity to thank our dedicated men and women who do this work day in and day out. And to put it into perspective, last year, they responded to over 90,000 requests for emergency services and transported close to 57,000 community residents to the hospital. That's, that's huge. In addition, they're doing treatment modalities in the field that only a few organizations are doing across the country. Just to let you know that the average cardiac arrest outcome nationally is about 11%, 12%. These folks, they, they moved the needle here in Brevard from 16% to 32%. So, a great debt of gratitude to these individuals and to all those that are staffing the front lines today. Thank you again for allowing us to do what we love to do so much. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Briefly, I just want to, I know I'm speaking for the entire commission when I say this. Each and every one of you means so much to us, and we appreciate more than you know the dedication that you have out there under very, very hard situations sometimes. So God bless you all, and thank you for what you do. Okay. Commissioner Felton, you got something?
I'll just say real quick, you know, I tell residents all the time, I hope that I'll never have to take a ride in the big red box, but if I do, I'm glad that your folks are there, because I know we'll get the appropriate care. I think we should all go down and take a picture.
Okay, let's go.
All right.
Lisa, you not getting in the picture?
Great work, Guy. Great work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Wyatt, are you here today? Oh, right there in that black hat. Come on up here, stand in front for a minute, if you would. I want to tell a real fast story, just to tell you the generosity and, and things that happened in Brevard County that just really, I think are miracles. A very good friend, it's a friend of a lot of people on the commission, his name's, an attorney by the name of Malcolm Kirshenbaum, and he was at my house one night for dinner with his wife, and, and we were talking about lifeguards, and we were talking about a variety of other different things. And Malcolm said to me, he said, "Do you realize that two floors below you in your condominium, the woman that owns the, that takes care of the foundation for Ron Johns would be more than happy to support and give you guys some money to, to put together Drown Zero Program?" And I said, "What?" And he said, "I'll text her, and I'll have her right up here." So he texts Jacqueline Youngs. Jacqueline comes up, she looks at me, and she said, "What do you need from us? The foundation will take care of it." And tonight, today, we have an opportunity to show you some of that stuff, but I can tell you, in addition to that, Ron Johns gave us $80,000 for a facility to take care of these, this equipment that's out there. And I'm telling you right now, we absolutely need it. You see a thing of it over here, but let me read this resolution. I'm sorry to get sidetracked, but I just thought it was important to do that. Whereas beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Brevard County represent a world-renowned recreation resource that millions of residents and villagers alike are drawn each year. Whereas the aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards. And whereas lifeguards do an excellent job of preventing drownings, but there are many areas of the beach that do not have lifeguard protected nearby, and swimmers can get in trouble at any time, sometime before or after a local lifeguard chief arrives. Whereas, in those situations, a Drown Zero flotation station provides a life ring on a stand that can be used by someone on the beach to safely attempt to rescue a swimmer distressed by throwing the lifeguard and the life ring or by swimming out with the ring. Whereas, more than 200 Drown Zero International flotation stations have been installed in Florida beaches, including 183 in Brevard County, thanks to the continuing partnership with Surfing Evolution Preservation Foundation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby recognize Drown Zero International and its Surfing Evolution Preservation Foundation for their efforts to prevent drownings and expanding water education, awareness, and recreation equipment availability on Brevard County beaches. I'd like to make a move that we accept this resolution.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion.
That's great.
I got, I have a question before.
Yes, sir. Yes, all in favor signify by saying?
No. Oh, sorry. Before.
You want a question now?
Go ahead.
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Worth, supposedly the goal of this organization is to reduce and prevent drowning deaths. At the March 7th Cocoa Beach meeting, you said, I quote, "I fought this battle with the county when I was lifeguard chief to get more guards, and I can't believe the state of lifeguards we're in." You further went on to say, "We should not pay for an organization that's providing us USLA professional lifeguards," and quote, "is not meeting USLA standards." My question is this: Why have you moved away from valuing lifeguards instead of working to increase lifeguard funding, effectively removing them from those popular beaches in the county, and now encourage them to replace them with a ring on a post?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Chair, Vice Commissioners, where you at the county manager, or county manager, county attorney and staff, as well as your public safety services. And let me reply to that. That was a very passionate presentation I gave, maybe some things that, you know, came from the heart and outside of professionalism to you guys. I know I could have done things better, and I have apologized to the people for that. But let me make clear: In no way am I replacing lifeguards. I still advocate lifeguards. Just today, this is actually Beach Safety Week as well as EMS. And I reached out to the lifeguards, and I want to provide the lifeguards a prestigious membership that a lot of them have never seen or heard of. It's called the USLA membership. Each individual lifeguard has it. I offered to pay for that. I foster lifeguarding. What we're doing, if it hasn't been clear, is a force multiplier. We have 210 beach accesses in Brevard County. We, at the, at the peak of the season, we have like 25 towers. That still leaves a huge gap. When I was lifeguard chief, I spent my whole career trying to fight for the year-round program that we have today, and I'm very honored with that. It just, what I was very disappointed is, for one, I hate to say this loudly again, we had a drowning in front of a lifeguard tower. The chance of drowning in front of a lifeguard are one in 18 million. We were that one. Regardless how you slice it, and there's a lot of investigation going on it, lifeguards do a preventative job. We do victim recognition, we do dry land guarding. If you have to go into the water, something's got by you. On that day, the tapes showed that the lifeguards were not very observant. And I was upset about that, because I saw the tapes on that. And if you understand and stand where I stand, I pulled out, as lifeguard chief, 26 people from the ocean and did CPR, and they didn't make it. So I'm very passionate about this. What I've done is, again, created a force multiplier in areas where we don't have lifeguards, during times that we don't have lifeguards, from 10 to 5. I want to report of something I was very excited of reporting today. Since you guys approved us in April, we've had 50 assists with these. 50. That means that there's 50 people, there were no lifeguards around, there, there was no EMS needed to be responded, because a lot of the times, people take care of it, much like surfers have in the past, and they're called undocumented rescues. We're also working to, to improve this by providing technology, and we had a meeting yesterday with the city of Cocoa Beach, the county's next, as well as Melville Beach, to implement technology that when it's pulled, it's no different than a fire extinguisher in a building. An alarm will go off, dispatch will go, and it's a fire alarm, and we roll out. And that's in the, in the absence of lifeguards, when they're not there, or we, we don't have them. But I tell you, we did not by any way replace.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
First of all, you had me at, at, when you apologized. I hadn't heard that. I understand sometimes we say things when we're getting passionate and stuff, so that is, I appreciate you doing that. I'm sure you did that before. I had not heard that, so thank you for saying that. Unfortunately, it went a little sideways from there. I just want to make something extremely clear, because your facts or your perception of reality and facts are completely different. I'm, I'm going to stand up for the county lifeguards and say what, I'm not going to say it, I'm going to pass it over to Voltaire. You should know this stuff as a former lifeguard. I did not know this. I've never been a lifeguard. I don't, I know darn well, I couldn't pass the darn test. There's a field of vision that lifeguards work in. My thought it was 75 feet, either way, so the field of vision is 150 feet. I can't imagine watching the number of swimmers, God knows how far you have to watch out, but 150 feet is a long. And you, you said that someone drowned within that field of vision of 150 feet. I'd like to pass it over to Voltaire, because my recollection and yours are quite different.
Have you seen the tape, sir?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? I, I'm, I'm very passionate about county employees here, and when we disparage one, I think that that's kind of a travesty. So Chief, was the person that drowned, unfortunately, it's terrible. Were they in that 150?
It was outside, it was north of that.
How much north do you recall?
I believe it was almost a block. But I'll say, the, I've gotten the preliminary, I think Cocoa Beach did the investigation. And from the lifeguard chief, it was found well outside of the, you know, reasonable means of the lifeguard tower to be in their visual.
And it's a terrible, it's a terrible situation, but to say, to characterize that someone drowned right in front of a lifeguard is, is, is not helping the situation, not only, it's not factually correct. And, and I think that's extremely, extremely unfortunate, and, and I don't appreciate disparaging the hard-working men and women that are out there doing their best to make sure that people are safe.
Wyatt, I don't think we need any more comments in regards to this, other than Commissioner Pritchett has her light on. Would you like to say something, Commissioner?
Yes. I, I heard you say that you're working on making those so that they activate emergency medical, and I, I think that is a wonderful idea. I love it when people come along with new innovative ideas, and I think that's great. And usually, it's the public that has to help come up with some of these things, and there's a lot of us. So I really want to thank you for that. I heard that, and I think that's a really good thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Tobias, did I cut you off? Did you have any more questions?
No, you did. Thank you very much.
All right. Pat or Matt, do you have any comments at all?
Look. No, sir. Thank you.
Wyatt, I think as soon as that happened, the county manager called me in his office, and we talked about it, and I told him that you were very passionate about this. And I recognize your passion, but I also recognize what you're doing here, and this is going to protect lives on our beach, and we thank you for it. There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Wyatt, do you have something you want to say other than talking about Cocoa Beach lifeguard situation?
Yeah. Again, there's apologies thrown all over the place on that, and I think what needs to be taken into consideration, last thing about that is, lifeguards know. Lifeguards know. And with that, I can't, I'd be remiss to recognize the volunteers that we have. This program's a 501(c)(3), and it's run by volunteers. And I, some were gracious enough to show up today, and they represent the Rotary Clubs, and the Rotary Clubs have been instrumental in helping us maintain and monitor and...
Wyatt, I don't think we need any more comments in regards to this, other than Commissioner Pritchett has her light on. Would you like to say something, Commissioner?
Yes, I, I heard you say that you're working on making those so that they activate emergency medical. And I think that is a wonderful idea. I love it when people come along with new innovative ideas. And I think that's great. And usually, it's the public that has to help come up with some of these things, and there's a lot of us. So I really want to thank you for that. I heard that, and I think that's a really good thing. Thank you.
Commissioner Tobia, did I cut you off? Did you have any more questions?
No, you did. Thank you very much.
All right, Pat or Matt, do you have any comments at all?
Look.
No, sir, thank you.
Wyatt, I think as soon as that happened, the county manager called me in his office and we talked about it, and I told him that you were very passionate about this. And I recognize your passion, but I also recognize what you're doing here. And this is going to protect lives on our beach, and we thank you for it. There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Wyatt, do you have something you want to say other than talking about Cocoa Beach lifeguard situation?
Yeah, again, there's apologies thrown all over the place on that. And I think what needs to be taken into consideration, last thing about that is, lifeguards know. Lifeguards know. And with that, I can't, I'd be remiss to recognize the volunteers that we have. This program's a 501(c)(3) and it's run by volunteers. And I, some were gracious enough to show up today, and they represent the Rotary Clubs. And the Rotary Clubs have been instrumental in helping us maintain and monitor and keep them alive. We have Indian Atlantic and we have Melbourne Beach Rotary Club, as well as on Cocoa Beach. And if you guys want to come up too, we could get a picture. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do.
I need my wife.
Yeah, yeah.
Come on.
That's exactly correct. Thank you so much, very, very much for all your help. Thank you. God bless you all. Thank you so much. Kim, did we have two plaques for them? If we didn't, we need one more so that we can give that to Jacqueline Youngs, please, when you get a chance. Thank you so much. All right, let's go to the next resolution.
Yeah, Public Works.
Public Works.
Mark Bernath.
Is Mark not here?
He's here.
Oh.
Are you bringing the rest of the Public Works folks? Or your delegates?
No.
Okay.
Hey, Mark, how are you this morning, buddy?
Commissioner.
Nice to see you again.
All right, everybody bear with me. There's a lot of details in this one. I have a resolution for National Public Works Week. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Brevard County. And whereas these functions could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals responsible for rebuilding, improving, operating, maintaining and protecting our nation's transportation, drainage, water supply, water treatment, water quality and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas the Brevard County Public Works Department's mission is to plan and implement projects and services that create and maintain a comprehensive transportation and facilities infrastructure, the department maintains 1,142 miles of paved roads, 82 miles of dirt roads, 717 miles of sidewalk, 908 miles of curb and gutter, 947 miles of drainage, ditches and swales, 19,000 drainage pipes, 50 bridges, 65,000 signs, 354 traffic signals, 667 street lights, 190 traffic warning beacons and school zone flashers, 4.4 million square feet of county buildings, and has more than 750 projects in progress. And whereas the Brevard County Solid Waste Management Department mission is to protect public health, by providing an efficient and environmentally sound solid waste management system, the department handles 4,000 tons of solid waste per day, disposing 1.2 million tons of waste per year, in addition to diverting over 1 million tons per year for recycling. And whereas the mission of the Brevard County Natural Resources Management Department is to foster sustainable use and stewardship of the county's natural resources through cost-effective, science-based and consensus-driven management actions, the department sweeps 6,000 lane miles of curbed streets, maintains 485 stormwater treatment facilities, removes four million, removes millions of pounds of nutrient-rich aquatic vegetation from stormwater ponds, performs 350 illicit discharge inspections and 500 inspections of petroleum hazardous materials facilities. And whereas the Brevard County Utility Services Department continues to invest and renew assets for the benefit of public safety and the environment for generations to come, the department assures that all federal and state environmental laws pertaining to water, sewer and reuse are met. Staff assist all of our water, sewer and reuse customers by mobilizing on-site and providing administrative assistance. And whereas, we recognize and celebrate the important contributions the Public Works professionals make in advancing quality of life for all. We encourage community members to join in activities and ceremonies that are designed to pay tribute to Public Works professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida designate the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week in Brevard County, Florida. Done order adopted in regular sessions 21st day of May 2024. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
I need discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Mark, I do want to ask you one question. After all that stuff, on Sunday or whenever your day off is there, and you have a day off and your wife asks you to cut the grass, what do you say to her?
We've contracted it out, Commissioner.
All right. Okay, Mark, go ahead, buddy.
All right. Well, thank you and good morning, Commissioners. I want to express my sincerest gratitude to the board for supporting us. Public Works Week has grown into an international event, and in this context, it's not just the department that I lead for the county, but rather a broader community of professionals to help manage roads we drive on, to the efficient waste management systems we rely on, and many critical lines of efforts in between. I'm speaking on behalf of the primary county departments and directors that lead these tasks and nearly 750 county employees that we collectively represent. The theme this year is "Advancing Quality of Life for All" underscores the vital role that Public Works professionals play in enhancing the well-being and safety of all individuals within a community. It promotes the idea that the work carried out directly contributes to improving the overall quality of life for residents by providing essential services and infrastructure. By recognizing Public Works Week, you are acknowledging the hard work, dedication and expertise of these professionals. These are unsung heroes and first responders who work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure the communities function smoothly and efficiently, and their efforts, dedication, expertise support our daily lives. We are also reminding ourselves of the importance of investing in infrastructure and the people who maintain it. Once again, I want to thank the board for its support of this resolution.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Anything else want to take the picture?
I don't know if we have wide enough lens for this one. Great job, guys, ladies, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you so very much. We are moving on to the consent agenda, and we have some cards here on items four, item six, item 11, F-11, F-19, F-23, F-25. That's on the consent agenda. So before we go into those cards, does the commission have anything they want pulled to discuss?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to vote no on F-22.
Okay. No vote on F-22.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so consent agenda number four, Sandra Sullivan.
Actually, I put the wrong number. It's five. I apologize if you don't mind changing that. So this is pertaining to the grants from the Florida DEP, specifically $10 million for the Grand Canal project. And the, the issue that I have with this item is the health concerns and the impacts of potential liability for the county in moving forward with this. So our residents have communicated some issues with concerns with hydrogen sulfide, which you've been testing. There are some exceedances of the residential at certain times, but not overall the eight hour. But it does raise a concern. They also tested for flammable VOCs. But why not VOCs? The, the fire department has this equipment, they came to my yard, I know they do, to test for VOCs. And we know now that PFOS contamination is more of a VOC than they previously thought and is an inhalation hazard. So that's a very big red flag, that they had the equipment and they only tested for flammable VOCs and not, not the VOC of concern. As you know, Patrick is the third highest contaminated base in forever chemical in the entire country of military bases. And here we are dredging muck that we know is contaminated with it. It recently got circular designation as a hazardous material. I'd also like to add to this that there are issues in other areas of the country where they're putting sewage sludge on agricultural land. We had that as well here in Brevard testing and found it elevated. And so the muck would be additionally another source of that. And I want to bring your attention to a article here from St. Petersburg. This was arsenic, which is also in that contamination. Arsenic at the residential cleanup target going on agricultural land. Brevard County is putting arsenic at the commercial cleanup target, which is six times as much. The problem with Grand Canal is that there's much more organic material in the muck, which means when it goes out, just like this article, when it goes out on the fields, it decomposes and it concentrates the contamination, whether it be PFOS or whether it be arsenic, and we're not testing those fields. And I, I have advocated very strongly since the very beginning that this muck, for the health and safety, which is a primary government role, that this muck be tested for PFOS, that these fields where it's going out on the floodplains of the St. John's south of our drinking water source, that we should be testing these materials. And I'll just mention finally, there are ranches all across the country. We don't know what agriculturally this is being used for. Cows eating it? Is it growing? Either way, these chemicals uptake into the plants or in the cows, and farmland is being contaminated and made worthless across the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sandra. William Coughlin, item number six, F-6.
Good morning, William.
Good morning. Yes, my name is William Coughlin, 3710 Bayshore Boulevard Northeast. I'm here today representing Gator Dredging as its owner. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm here today regarding consent agenda item F-6, which is the proposed rejection of our bid for the O'Gally Muck Removal Project. This project includes very important components for muck removal and disposal, as well as return water treatment. Those three facets of the project are very difficult to perform in concert and require very specific knowledge in order to prepare an engineer's estimate, which is what our bid was compared against. Gator Dredging has spent over 300 man-hours precisely evaluating all components and the specifications of the project. We have applied an innovative, our innovative proven methodologies experienced in our recently completed and ongoing Indian River Lagoon muck removal, and our proven technologies for decant water treatment. We understand the constraints on the consulting engineers and county staff related to estimating the costs for such an intricate project given today's ever-increasing costs in manpower, materials, chemicals, equipment needs and disposal site cost escalations. That said, given the opportunity to collaborate with Gator Dredging and an open and transparent post-bid communication process, the belief of Gator Dredging, then we can substantially reduce a contract award amount can be achieved. During our intensive evaluation of this project, we have identified several value engineering opportunities that I do not believe have been considered during the bid process. Given the opportunity to communicate with county staff and their consulting engineers, we believe a successful completion of the O'Gally Muck Removal Project can be achieved. With that, we respectfully, excuse me, I respectfully request that this board consider tabling item F-6 until the next available board meeting so that we have time to collaborate with county staff and their consulting engineers. Thank you for consideration of this request.
Okay, thank you. Number one, I believe your bid was twice as high as the original thing. Virginia, do you have any comments that you'd like to make on this, or would you like to see this tabled, or I know, I know you need some time to look at it because the bid was so high. But if you don't mind, make a few comments. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, we would normally go back and, and attempt negotiations with the sole bidder before asking to reject bids. We moved this one quickly onto your agenda because of the June break. The bidder tells us that he thinks he has a way to make some, some modifications that would get it within our budget and still achieve the nutrient load reductions that are the intent of the project. The question is whether those changes are significant enough that the board would actually prefer that it be rebid. So you can, you can ask us to go ahead and negotiate. You could table this to July and ask us to negotiate, or you can reject it now. The choice is the board's.
Commissioner Pritchett, would you take the chair?
Certainly.
Thank you very much. Look, I know we've done business with Gator before and we, Sandra, I recognize that you've got time to speak. I have a comment to this gentleman first, if you don't mind. Thank you. We appreciate all the hard work that you've done, but in this particular case, at least from my opinion, we need to reject this now, and then you're going to have other discussions with the county then, but that's going to be up to this, to the board real fast, again. Now, Sandra Sullivan, you have comments you need to make?
So Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So originally, we did the original O'Gally project. I looked it up in the lagoon plans. They're not online, but I keep copies of them in my repository so I can refer back to the information that is not in the current one. But so I have here a graph. So the original O'Gally project was 750,000 cubic yards of muck for a little over $26 million. Okay? So we're talking, this project is about 330,000 cubic yards of muck, so about half, okay, of the amount of muck. Now, that previous project, we did at Sarno, okay, the Sarno lands that we want to give to the city of Melbourne. And so I think the issue with this project, and I've been lamenting about this, is we're now sending muck 8.1 miles via a pipeline with transfer pumps down to BV-52 in Palm Bay. Imagine if we used the other site, and I think I would encourage that you go out for a bid and utilize the Sarno site and see what the bid difference is as a change in scope and specifications. And it raises a question that also on, what are we going to run into in the Satellite Beach and Indian Harbor project, which are 13.1 miles to pump muck? So literally with 40, almost $50 million on this O'Gally project for half as much muck, you're talking a fourfold increase in costs over what the project was for the 2017 and 2019 O'Gally project. I hope you reject this bid and revise the specification. Thank you.
Okay, you might as well stand up there. You've got several more.
Okay.
Consent F- Consent F11, Sandra Sullivan, please. This is permission for the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization to apply to rail crossing elimination grant.
Sandra Sullivan, yeah, so this is regarding improving safety on the crossovers and utilizing money from the gas tax. Now, quite frankly, we have a fiscal crisis transportation-wise in Brevard County, as presented in our budget workshop a year ago, because this information is missing from this year's. This here, 799 million dollars, that's how much we're funding. If we utilize all four of our funding sources, which we chose none this year, we kicked the can down the road for another year, we don't have enough money to fund our needs for transportation. We have no business taking 1.1 million dollars from the very small amount of money we have towards transportation. And putting that to Brightline's responsibility for these crossings, it is their responsibility for 18 years, upon which after that, the county will be responsible for these crossings. In the meantime, maybe it's about time to take a private entity and hold them accountable for their own rail crossings while they still have that responsibility. Thank you.
Good morning, Michael Rodriguez. I'm the chief deputy city attorney for the city of Palm Bay. I only put the card in just in case the item was pulled and you had any questions. I really don't have anything to say.
Sit right over here in a corner. We might, when we get to it then, I think you're fine.
That was it.
All right, Michael, thank you so much.
So, this is Sandra Sullivan. This is about using, this is about ship and sale, which is housing assistance. And my request is that, and I don't know if the county can do this or not, is to put limitations on who gets affordable housing or housing assistance to people who are U.S. citizens or are legally here in the country. We all hear about Florida has a lot of illegals coming into the country, there's concerns in other states, and certainly here, on using public funds to provide housing to illegals. And so, I had written Ian Golden about what are the requirements here for checking, and he said that for ships, state's funding, and home federal funding projects, we have valid ideas, well as homestead established for residency, which means they check that your driver's license that you live here, essentially. And that's not enough. I think we should be, we should be being fiscally conservative and actually, America first, if you want to put it.
Sandra, I hate to interrupt you, but I think, I think the card that you filled that was for Topaz.
The ship and sale? Oh, the Topaz one, okay. Well, I just covered another one.
Okay, so I think we just crossed them out.
So, the Topaz one is only this. We're 1.2 million dollars for a Topaz under the North Brevard Economic Development Zone. This is public money. I think that saying that we're not going to say where this project is or any details about the project, when we're using public money, I think public disclosures are appropriate. The fact that this project is veiled in secrecy, I think, that's one thing, that's their prerogative. But when you come to asking for public money, I think that there should be disclosures. And further, the, it's like magic numbers. Some of the numbers, I've read the reports previously before, and some of the "employees" that they are generating are in fact service members with Patrick, with Space Force. That's not generating jobs. Those are positions that would be there anyway, working in that position. So, it's just like a handout to, you know, wherever we want to put funds, but not being, I don't know, fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Brevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Real quickly, Troy, did you have any comments on this at all? Did you want to say anything? No, you're fine? Okay. Sandra, just a quick comment, and this is not being disrespectful in any way, but I want to tell you that some things the United States of America has to keep secret, and this is one of those things. So, I'm sorry, this is not going to be released to the general public period. Thank you. All right. Let's go on to the, let's go on to, oh, yes, we do. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded in by Commissioner Felton, recognizing that Commissioner Devia voted no on F22. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. So, thank you for helping us get through that quite lengthy consent agenda, but I think it was all well done. All right. So, let's go to public comments, page one, right. Heather Ekl, Elko?
No, no, no.
Yeah, we're on to public comments, and I think this is the 15-minute period that we adopted the last meeting with Commissioner Goodson. Yeah, it will take us a little bit of time. Hi, Heather, how are you?
Good morning. Fine, thank you. I want to speak briefly about Erna Nixon Hammock. A couple weeks ago, there was a bit of a panic because people learned that there is no full-time staff there now. There's only the rotating maintenance people. And I wrote to my commissioner, Mr. Steele, and he directed my inquiry to the Parks and Recreation Supervisor, who said the positions will be filled. I hope they'll be filled in a timely manner. Erna Nixon Hammock is a very popular park near the mall. I hope many of you've seen it, has a fabulous boardwalk, and that boardwalk is used by people who have difficulty walking on uneven ground. So, that beautiful, nice, smooth boardwalk is particularly attractive to them, as well as people that come for lunch and after work, from a lot of the contractors around there. So, why was there such a panic? In my opinion, and I've lived here 42 years, and probably in the last eight years, been pretty rattled by some of the news that we get by various means, we don't feel the trust that we would like to feel. A few months ago, we read that Wickham Park was going to be traded off to Melbourne. A few months prior to that, we learned that the arts funding was going to be zeroed out. And a few months before that, it was another issue. Let me see. Well, it doesn't matter, there was another one. Here's the point. Those were corrected. I saw you shake your heads, that we didn't fund, zero out the arts, we didn't get rid of Wickham Park, and we didn't, for any number of reasons, the same decisions that were made kind of from a power base without citizens being informed, but worse than being informed, is being considered. The quality of life in this county, for many of us, is parks, is the arts, and is security that the commission is looking out for the best interests. The trees on Rockledge Drive now stand naked with no limbs and no canopies.
Is that on the agenda later on?
That's, I'm still on, I'm still on Erna Nixon.
I understand, but if it's on the agenda later on, we don't need you to be talking about it.
The trust that has been broken.
It's not on there, okay. Sorry, sorry, Heather, go ahead. I apologize.
The trust that has been broken through those kinds of decisions and kind of a hard-edged nonresponsiveness is why we panicked about Erna Nixon Park. I hope it will be filled in a timely manner. That's my request.
Thank you, Heather. Heather, I think we've responded to your emails quite candidly and quite nicely, and Mary Ellen Donner has a reply to your things, very nice and valid.
I mentioned that here, sir.
I know that you have, but we're working on all those things. And some of the things that you're talking about, where we have to change boats in the middle of the stream are because there's emergency situations that the county has to make decisions on. So, we apologize if we can't give all the information to the general public sometimes that has to be dealt with on an emergency basis. But thank you for your comments, we understand them, and we'll try to do better.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. G2, Mary Helen King.
I'm going to pass.
Thank you. How are you today?
I'm going to pass on responding to that.
That's okay. You're welcome to do that.
Public comments, go ahead. I'm Chuck Sheridan. I live on Merritt Island, and this is probably one of the last things I want to do, is criticize a department, and that's not my intent at all. I have a friend that lost her husband about a year before I lost my wife, and helped me with getting my wife home from the hospital. She recently, she lives in a neighborhood close by here, gated community, and recently had, well, two weeks ago, had a roof put on her house. I went to look at it while it was during construction and noticed that the drying inspection, nail inspection, has already been signed off, and only about a quarter of the roof had been removed. Well, over the weekend, she developed a leak with apparently some bad flashing and has to have the drywall removed and has insulation replaced and the ceiling painted. I don't know if the building department is overtaxed, or that this roofer does about four houses a week in this neighborhood, but this was a new crew with him, that he built up a trust where he doesn't feel he needs to go on the roof, which as a general contractor, I would have loved. I've been a general contractor for 40 years. I've served two terms, appointed two terms by the governor to the Building Code Administrators and Inspectors Board. So, that's why I feel like I, you know, I should say something, because the reason we have building inspectors is to give that second view, because it's hot out there. People make mistakes, and the supervisor did get up on the roof and look at it before they proceeded at different stages, progress inspections, I guess, but the building department never got on the roof and signed it off.
How do you know the building department never got on the roof?
I was there.
You were there all day long, all night long?
When he signed off on one of the tickets, yes.
Thank you.
She has cameras around the house, but it's something just maybe to look into. Probably it's an isolated case. You know, there were storms coming that day and...
Let me make a suggestion to you, if I can, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
You know, we can't really do anything about your public comments today, but if you ever want anything done, probably try to do it with an email thread and go from there, because quite candidly, this will fall through the cracks today. And I mean, yes, maybe Terry Talbot will hear it, but it's always best to do an email thread so that you can track where these things are.
I'll follow.
Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I think we have two more cards. Are they, one more card for this 15-minute public comments, Sandra Sullivan?
All right, well, let's just go, let's do Sarah also.
Am I next?
Yes, ma'am, go on up. Then we're going to do Sarah also, even though we're all supposed to do what?
I want to talk about the Indian River Lagoon sales tax and the degradation of trust with we the people of Brevard. And first, I'm going to start with some photos. So, we had a board vote here pertaining to the right-of-way on Rockledge Drive, and you had asked Mr. Bernath if they were going to cut trees. So, they came in and they chopped trees, okay? So, this is some of the pictures. And some of the trees that, after leaving stumps like this, partial trunks, some of the owners said, yeah, we want them cut down all the way. This is not tree trimming. This is tree butchering. A very scenic drive, a state scenic drive, a federal scenic drive. These are just some of the photos. There are more. I was out there yesterday. It's horrendous what this has done. And I just want to say that, to me, it's very concerning to me because this project, for a sewer project on this road, has been on there since the original lagoon plan. And the residents have advocated a lot on the protection of these trees. Do you know that the sorrel plant has funded five septic tanks, advanced septic tanks, nearly $100,000? So, according to the GIS system, this septic putting in sewer is in progress. And then you have Grand Canal. You have the Grand Canal issues, and I brought up those, and the trust issues there. And then you have Flamingo Drive. So, we in South Patrick Shores have a CD motel, and thanks to Devia, a bar that's open up all night, and a strip club. And the only protection that South Patrick Shores has from these influences is a county ordinance that says to have a tree buffer. You're going to come in, you're going to cut down the trees and expose our neighborhood to some unsavory elements, and violate your own ordinance to put in an exfiltration system which, where the groundwater, which is 10 inches beneath the ground, the project is flawed at the outset, and you're going to expose our community. And so, you have three projects that we the people have stated that we are in opposition to, and yet you steamroll ahead with them and you just ignore we the people. Well, maybe it's time for we the people to vote no to the lagoon tax.
I'm going to refrain from making any comments on that. There you go. Sarah Hodge, please. Hi, Sarah. Welcome back.
First, I'd like to say I agree with everything she just said. And I just have been heartbroken since those trees have been butchered, not cut. Have you even gone to look at these? Any of you? And what do you think? Well, I've talked to a lot of people that grew up here with us, and they're devastated. Those trees, the mother tree was 350 years old. They'll, generations will never see trees like that again. You were to trim those trees, right? You didn't. You butchered them, you broke them down. Some of them are down to the ground, and there was no reason for that. And those trees are important for the filtration, for the erosion on the soil, on the river. They're important for so many things. And I know people that come here just to visit that river drive, just because they care about the history they had there. I care about it. I had family that, they would go there when people would pass away in our family because that meant so much to them to get peace. There is an autism group that was using that road for therapy. Once a week, those families, they don't know what they're going to do now, okay? Why? Why did you butcher those trees? There is no excuse for it, and I'm telling you, people aren't going to forget it. And I've got a list of people that have talked to me about this, and they are not happy that I grew up with here. And this is not, why would you do that? I can't even, it's unconscionable. You tell people you're going to trim their trees and you cut them down? 350-year-old trees? People that need it for therapy? And it doesn't matter to you. And it doesn't matter to you at all? It's devastating. It really is. Lot of the people for the Tree Committee did not come today, because they're devastated and they couldn't sit up here and talk. You don't know what you've done to this county. And people will not forget it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Tom.
Please, bring him up here. I want to ask Mark questions and rebuttal or comments.
Okay, all right. Mark, are you here? Come on back up.
Not that it will make a bit of difference.
No, no, sir. You go ahead and you, you, this is your district. This is your comment. You're welcome to make whatever comment you'd like, sir.
Question, Mark.
Yes, Commissioner.
65 total trees, correct?
Yes, there are 65. Four of them were actually done by residents before we got there.
Okay. Out of the 61 left, how many did you totally destroy and cut, cut down?
First of all, we, we didn't cut down any without the express permission and a right of entry from the residents themselves. There were roughly, from recollection, about 14 that we defined as major plus-plus. We sent them out, certified mail, to the actual residents, and we were very explicit what we would be doing, which is cutting it on the right-of-way line or the edge of pavement. At their option, we would take them down.
You're answering way too much. I just really would like to know, how many trees did you cut down on our right-of-way?
I believe there were, I believe there were two, but it was at the property owner's request.
Hold on. Just, just let him talk, would you? And then, you come up here and talk all you want. Because undoubtedly, we raped, pillaged, and plundered the whole River Road, correct?
Uh, that's not...
By their standards.
When, when you go down Rockledge Drive, there are a handful of trees that we have done the major cut, major plus-plus cutting. Otherwise, the trimming, most of them were minor, half of them were minor trimming. The others were major trimming, but really just limb trimming.
Okay. And did, did the...
I, I have, Sarah, that's a no. All right, you, sir, put that down now. We're not gonna put up with this stuff. We're trying to do this in a kind, calm fashion, and yet, you're starting to raise hell. No more.
Would you say most of the trimming, or could you go down there? Most of it was above your head?
It was at the 14-foot level, which is the, both the county code, the state code, and the federal code minimum regulations. It's actually 16 feet, 6 inches, but after a technical evaluation by our traffic engineer, we decided that we could lower it so that we can maximize the amount of trees we didn't have to touch.
Now, yesterday, was there a wreck on River Road yesterday with school buses that even hit a tree?
Yes, Commissioner, so...
Was that your tree? Was it a tree we trimmed?
It was a tree that we trimmed at 14 feet. They still managed to hit it.
Do you, do you know why, or just it just happened?
It appeared that the tire and the frame were slightly over the edge of pavement while the, the tires themselves were on the pavement. It, it looked like it was over by about 2 inches.
Excuse me, Commissioner, excuse me for one second. Kristin, I'm gonna warn you one more time. No more signs today. No more signs today, or you will be escorted out of this meeting. It's the last warning I'm giving. Thank you. Go ahead, Mark. I apologize, Commissioner, I apologize.
That's all right. Tremming is done? 100% done? Yes or no?
There, there was one more tree this morning that was being worked on, and that is a major plus-plus. And then, there'll be some stump grinding. Again, it was at the request of those property owners to have their trees taken down, and we agreed that we would remove it completely. So, there is some of that cleanup today.
Let me, can I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
You got written authorization to do this, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I apologize, Commissioner. Go ahead.
No, no. Well, there's no other questions. I just, you know, you're done as far as trimming, correct? Other than stump grinding, you're done as far as trimming, correct?
And, and the one tree that I mentioned that should be going on now...
And it will be finished today, hopefully.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's, yes, sir, go ahead, Commissioner.
Now, you, you had an arborist come down there, correct? And they, they viewed all the trees prior to trimming and said, "These are unhealthy or healthy." And I have a question for you. How much retention does an oak tree have as far as holding storm surge? Because the River Road, if you know it, is pretty much level, as you get further south, to the river elevation. It isn't like, it takes much for it to flood. So, how much does an oak tree retain in water? Does anybody know? I don't know.
That, that's something that I'm not able to answer. I, I can say definitively, though, when Natural Resources was up here with me, we had thoroughly reviewed it, and the minimal amount of trees being impacted is not an impact to the Indian River Lagoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioners. Mark, appreciate it very much. Let's go to H1. Ordinances rescinding the economic development ad valorem tax exemption for the Enchona Corporation. Hi, Karen.
Good morning.
I guess that means you're up, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Item H1 is requesting the Board of County Commissioners consider adopting an ordinance rescinding the economic development ad valorem tax exemption for Aconia Corporation and seek clawback of the 2023 exemption granted in the amount of $722.10.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second? It's been seconded by Commissioner Tamaia. Motion by Commissioner Felton. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
We got one card on H2, by the way.
All right. H2. Ordinance rescinding the economic development ad valorem tax exemption for BK Technologies. Sandra Sullivan, you have the floor.
Just very simple comment, Sandra Sullivan. With all of the ad valorem tax exemptions that have been rescinded, including this one and the previous one and other ones in other meetings, I hope that you don't bring forth this, this fall, a referendum to do ad valorem taxes. And it really brings into question, from my perspective, the effectiveness of the EDC when we have so many projects not bearing out with these tax exemptions. Thank you. Maybe we should rethink about restructuring that to embeds and having some accountability there with the, internally.
Did you have some comments, or there was no comments up here? Okay. Thank you. Let's clear those, if you don't mind, so I don't get any more confused than I already am. All right. Yes, sir, I'll do that in just a second, as soon as I get through this vote. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We're gonna take a five-minute break, please. H3. John, you got this one, buddy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. H3, on April 23rd, the Board provided us intent to go and develop an emergency management ordinance. We, we have done that. We are back with that ordinance. As a reminder, the ordinance is focused on making sure we have the operational flexibility we need to swiftly respond to disasters, that we are structured in a manner that we can both receive and, I guess, ask and receive federal and state support in a much more efficient manner.
John, I took a walk through the emergency center. Wow.
Yes.
We are, we are right where we need to be with that. Thank you so much for all your hard work with that. It's incredible. The citizens of this county should be thrilled with what's coming up. So, thank you for all your hard work.
We're grateful for your support.
Any comments? Yes? Do we need a motion on this or anything?
I was just gonna say one thing. When's the open house for the public?
Yes, sir, thank you. The open house for the public, and we hope everyone comes out, is the first and second of June.
Right.
So, that's what, next weekend, from 11 to 4?
Okay, very good.
All right, so, that was just the report. Any other comments on this? Matt, you got anything? All right, buddy. H4, public hearing regarding...
Make a motion?
I, she made a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded by Commissioner Felton. Motion was by Commissioner Pritchett. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Thank you.
That's all right, no problem. Oh, I have an apology to make. Quite, I hope not a whole lot, but on occasion, I am incorrect on my assumption on signs. You are welcome to have a sign in this meeting, as long as the sign is held by one person and it's not to be moved back and forth to destruct the view of the, the people and the thing. So, I apologize to Kristin for making the comment on the warning. So, I hope you accept my apology and to Sarah for the other one with the sign. So, I wanted to just make sure that was taken care of in complete transparency. So, I apologize. Okay. Now, H4, public hearing regarding Brevard County Home Investment Partnership Program. Morris, is this something that you were gonna talk about, or you...
This is Ian, sir.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Ian, I...
Good morning, Commissioners.
Ian, I'm digging your jacket, man.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, go ahead.
So, this item starts our annual action plan process for the year. This is the first public hearing. There's no vote. We just solicit input. There will be a public meeting where we solicit more input. It's in the notice that was put in the paper. We will then develop the plan and bring it back for the second and final public hearing in July.
Okay. No motion required on this?
No, just any, if there's any input, any cards.
Any discussion? Oh, there's, I don't think there's any cards on this one, no. All right. H5, approval resolution electing to not exempt property under Section 196 Florida Statute, commonly known as the Live Local Act, property tax. I can assure you Sandra Sullivan's name's on this someplace. Ah, I found it. But, I'm gonna go with Ted first. Pardon me?
Would you like District 2 Commissioner Goodson to introduce this, sir?
I, Tom, would you introduce this and then let that go forward? I had it even marked here.
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna move to our attorney to explain this at the time.
Get it right there until the attorney's finished, okay?
Because he has more knowledge of it and what it's trying to do by state government, so, please.
All right. Commissioners, as you know, the Live Local Act, which became law last year, established, among other things, a new ad valorem tax exemption for the owners of certain newly-constructed multifamily rental developments that provide affordable housing opportunities to persons who meet certain income thresholds. One of the thresholds was for qualified property used to provide affordable housing at 80 to 120% of the area median income. Properties in that category received a 75% exemption from the assessed value on, on those affordable units. However, units in that range are often marketed as luxury apartments. They're not traditionally what one might consider to be affordable. During the recent legislative session, the House, a bill was passed that allows local governments to opt out of that particular exemption. You have to meet certain criteria under a study that's published annually. We do meet that criteria, which shows that the number of affordable and available units is greater than the number of renter, renter households in the area in this particular category of affordable housing. So, the Board is able to opt out of this under the new statutory provision. If you were to opt out, the resolution doing that would take effect on January 1, 2025, and it would expire two years later unless the Board renews it before that time. This was advertised, according to the statutory requirements, and I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Commissioner Tobias, you have your light on?
I do. And I, I want to thank Commissioner Goodson for staying on top of this stuff. I know he follows what's going on in Tallahassee. He has a unique...
He has a unique insight here. In all honesty, I wish I would've jumped on this one, but you certainly, certainly beat me to the punch. So, I strongly support this. What I'm really curious to hear, I hope, you know, the bright ministry is here, because, you know, those folks are really on top of affordable housing issues, and they're constantly calling us to meet at our offices. So, here, it's on the agenda. I really look forward to hearing what they have to say about this, since they've, you know, come together and taken this as their major issue. I say that sarcastically, because I don't see any of those folks out there. They haven't contacted my office via phone, letter, or email. That being said, Commissioner Goodson, I just wanted to, many times, you know, you and I don't see it eye to eye, and this time, hats off to you. Thank you for, thank you for being on top of this one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to compliment, anytime John Tobias says anything nice about me, I'm nervous.
I thought he was gonna change his mind.
No, but, is this the answer to everything? No, it's not. So, be patient with this, with Tallahassee, be patient with us, because affordable housing is a, just a terrible thing to try to get your hands around, that we can, can make it work. Because affordable to me is totally different what might be affordable to you. That's always the kicker. So, bear with us as we go through this.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Ted.
Mr. Chair, while the commenter comes up, I should've noted earlier that this will require four votes of the board in order to pass pursuant to the statute.
Okay, thank you. It's a supermajority vote. All right, hi, Ted.
I'm Ted McCurtur. I'm just here to request that the commission vote yes to this opt-out option of granting ad valorem property tax exemptions to developers on the Live Local projects. I thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Ted. Is it Lenny King, or? Looney? Okay, hi, come on up.
Lennox King from West Melbourne, Florida. I'm the same as Ted, I'm just asking you to vote. We don't give them this benefit. Suzie Kaczerski, I'm sure all of you have gotten different emails from her in the past. She lives in our neighborhood, and she's been on top of this from the beginning. I think she spent probably hundreds of hours talking to, talking to everybody. She was gonna come up today, in fact, she was gonna ride with me, because she's not very familiar with Vieira, but yesterday morning, her husband passed away. So, if anybody was looking for her, because she's come to any of the meetings that have had anything to do with this, obviously couldn't make this one. So, I just request that you do not allow them to have this benefit.
Our condolences and prayers to-
Thank you.
-the lovely lady. Okay, Sarah Hodge.
Where are you at to, I mean, to support opting out? Sorry, Sarah Hodge. And this would be, if we don't opt out, there are people that aren't gonna be able to afford their taxes. These are local taxes, 75 percent. We, the people here, are gonna have to pay for their luxury apartment. And we've also, you know, impact fees. We haven't raised those since, like, 82. And here, we're gonna pay all the developers impact fees, and I've heard the developers are coming from other areas, and also out of country. So, why are we subsidizing rich developers? I support everyone that votes to opt out today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Dun, da, da, dun, dun, dun. Sandra, I know you're waiting with anticipation on this as one of your hot issues.
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So, I call the Live Local Bill the "you will own nothing and be happy" law. Isn't it funny how Tallahassee gives names to bills that is what it's not? Live Local, you think it's local rule, right? But it's a bill that takes away local rule to circumvent local planning and zoning laws, in addition, taking away the, this automatic 75 percent tax exemption. So, I'm grateful for the change with HB 70073, that at least gives the local government the right to do this tax exemption, and hopefully protect some of our citizens here from losing their homes. Because with the combined effect of inflation, insurance, and then, obviously, we're gonna have tax increases, because their tax exemptions are our tax increases, we're gonna see especially our elderly, our veterans, and people on fixed incomes increasingly having to sell their homes. And that's why I call this the "you will own nothing and be happy" law. So, this is a first step. I commend you, if you vote for this as a supermajority vote, to opt out, to help safeguard our tax increases. I mean, that would be being a fiscal conservative, right? So, I just wanted to just say that there are other ramifications related to this bill. As you know, 70073 also increases the density even further. Besides, you know, you guys just passed the emergency management ordinance. Evacuation becomes an issue, because we're, we are critical evacuation deficiency. So, as we, we look at this, I hope that, in other ways, our county will push back on government overreach. I believe that this bill, Live Local, is a violation of our state constitution, which guarantees the local government for planning and zoning. It hides this from the planning and zoning process, and is exempt under public records to even be able to do public records on existing. And what is the fiscal impact if you don't do this? I noticed that was missing from the agenda item. What is the fiscal impact if you don't exempt these taxes? And I would really appreciate if this commission would revisit the tax exemption, the impact fees, on waiving the impact fees that was passed at the end of the last year, because the impacts to, to we, the people, are great with this bill. Thank you.
Got one more card, Katie Delaney.
Good morning, Katie Delaney. I am here to waive in support of this item. We definitely need to be exempt from these tax exemptions, and I hope that, as we look at this and look forward towards the future, we also look again at our impact fees. We shouldn't be exempting impact fees from, from these Live Local projects, so. But, again, I'm in support of this, thank you.
Okay, going back to the commission. Commissioner Goodson?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution, Chair.
There's a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Felton. Discussion. Commissioner Pritchett, would you take the floor, please?
Certainly.
I'd just like to add that I am not voting in favor of this issue. This, this, this bill, the Live Local Bill, is a good bill, and the reason for the bill is simple. It's to get permits done faster, so that homeless, low-income housing people can get homes. You can laugh all you want, it's governor's bill, it's president of the senate's bill, it's a good bill, so I'm voting not to, to accept this. Just wanted to let everybody know where I stand.
So, you're voting not to opt out, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Can I say something to that, sir?
Yes, sir.
With all due respect, the committee bill that allows us to opt out is also a governor's bill. I mean, he signed that bill to allow us to opt out. And we have few opportunities to undo a preemption, and so, I think we should support this today. Thank you.
There you go. Anybody else? Commissioner Tobias, any, any comments? All in, ending discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Nay? Okay.
So, it passes.
So, it passes four to one. All right. Let's move forward. All right, let's go to H six, defeesance of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, section 108, loan 1 billion, or 1,64,646.77, grant funds. Who is taking this?
That's mine again, Commissioner.
There you go.
Good morning again. So, we have a, two section 108 loans. This is for defeesing one of them. We did a 30-day public comment period that ended yesterday. We received no comments on it. Excuse me. This is the final step for board approval. This will allow the community that has that 108 loan to come back and start submitting projects 13 years sooner than they would normally be able to, as well as help the department with its, part of its regulations under HUD relating to timeliness of expenditures.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Goodson, seconds. Any discussion from the board? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The motion carries. Thanks very much, sir. All right, we're moving into H seven, and I'm turning the floor over to Morris. Morris?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is a little unusual procedurally, so I'm gonna spend just a minute here talking about the procedure to hopefully save some time and answer some questions on the front end. This is a consideration of a vested rights petition being pursued by Air Liquide Large Industries, US LP. The nature of the vested rights determination regards noise emanating from their business operations on North Courtney Parkway in Merritt Island. Air Liquide was served with a notice of hearing and statement of violation in code enforcement proceeding, which is, has been stayed pending the outcome of this vested rights determination. Today, the board is asked to consider a recommended order prepared by a special magistrate after several days of public hearing, in consideration of argument of both the county and Air Liquide. And the board today is requested to either uphold the special magistrate's order, which denied vested rights, or did not find vested rights, reverse the special magistrate's order essentially in grant vested rights, or grant vested rights with conditions. In so doing, you may either adopt the special magistrate's proposed order, or direct the county attorney to prepare an order for the board to enter after the motion's voted upon. I should note that in this case, the county is going to be represented by outside counsel, Cliff Repiger. Due to the nature of this proceeding, in order for me to be able to represent the board in your capacity as the decision makers here, I can't also advocate on behalf of county staff. So, Cliff Repiger is gonna do that. He also did that at the vested rights hearing in front of the special magistrate. Today, under our rules of procedure for the vested rights determination, each party's going to be allowed 10 minutes to present their case, beginning with Air Liquide. No new evidence will be taken by the county commission. This consists of argument about the magistrate's proposed order, and the findings of fact below, or bound by the record below. No public comments, or consideration of comments from citizens. Under the code, they had 14 days prior to this hearing to submit written arguments, and all timely submitted written argument was provided to the board as part of the package. And, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you desire, you may call Air Liquide to present their case.
Let's move forward with Air Liquide presenting your case. How much time do we give, Morris?
10 minutes, sir.
10 minutes, okay, thank you very much.
Could I ask a point of procedure before that? Chairman and board, we have previously made a request to table this, in the hopes that we could reach a resolution with the homeowners that was acceptable to all the stakeholders, and then bring that to the county. In essence, we've spent a lot of time developing a 400-foot, 14-foot-tall noise buffer that we are proposing. We'd like to have a county meeting with the residents. And so, we've asked to table it. We got on this agenda, because it was the last one before the break, but our initial request was to table it, to allow us to have a community meeting, to see if we could get buy-in for the proposal, to then bring back to the county, and see if that resolves the issue before everybody spends a whole lot more money fighting in court, and writs of proceedings, and code enforcement, and takings claims, and all those things. So, I was wondering if we could just address that quickly, before we go to the meat and potatoes, because I don't want to waste your time.
Morris?
I would suggest that if the board's gonna consider the request to continue or table this to a future meeting, that you do so before receiving the argument of the parties.
Is there a motion to table?
Can I ask?
Yes, absolutely.
Typically, I'm always in favor of tabling, because it gives everybody an opportunity to come to conclusion. So, that kind of, I didn't know anything about it. So, Commissioner, I would love what your thought is on that.
And I think, in fairness, too, I believe staff may have a position on that, so you may wish to hear from Mr. Repiger on behalf of staff as well.
Yes, absolutely. Cliff?
Thank you, Chairman Steele. Honorable commission members, my name is Cliff Repiger. My business address, 2101 Waverly Place. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Whitebird, and we represent the Planning and Development Department, as Mr. Richardson said, based on the conflict, as a special outside counsel. As to the request to table, the issue's been pending since 2020, and when, that was when Air Liquide initially filed its initial petition for vested rights. Staff does not dispute the fact that the Air Liquide facility provides a critical function and is essential. We also recognize that they have made a proposal related to trying to resolve the noise violations. However, what's before you today is the determination as to whether they are vested from the noise standard at all. And so, staff believes that we need to get a resolution on whether and what standards actually apply to the plant. There are a number of opportunities to stay the matter in the code enforcement realm after this proceeding today is done. And so, while we recognize that, that Air Liquide certainly wants to work on an acceptable resolution, and I think staff is more than willing to consider that after today's proceedings are done, staff is asking that the board not approve tabling and move forward, based on the impact of the facility to the neighborhood, and the fact that it's been going on for as long as it has been.
And you can take this against my time, Commissioner Chairman, but if you give me two minutes just to explain why I think tabling's a good idea, I'd be happy to.
Morris, are you willing to re that additional two minutes?
Oh, no, no, you can take it from my ten.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about anything that might, my prejudice to commission.
No, that's within your discretion.
Okay, go ahead.
If you want to hear, Matt.
Thank you, yeah, because I wanted to go ahead and point out to the plant something. This plant has been there for 56 years, which is obviously older than anyone on this fine panel. And it's been providing both life-supporting facilities of oxygen and nitrogen that is absolutely essential to the Kennedy Space Center. Without the nitrogen from Air Liquide's plants, rockets will not launch. They cannot launch, because the nitrogen is inert, and it blankets the launch facility and prevents inadvertent explosions. This facility's been there for 56 years, and back in 2002, when residential was rezoned there, the commission stated that it was like buying next to an airport and complaining about airplanes. So, first, the, the plant is just a large compressor. Takes ambient air, separates it out into oxygen, separates it into nitrogen. Nitrogen goes to pipeline to the Kennedy Space Center. Nope, this isn't working. It goes to the Kennedy Space Center, and the oxygen then is put into canisters that's sent to the hospitals. It supports four out of the five largest employers in Brevard County, which is the hospital system, and the NASA systems, as well as Lockheed Martin, and all those other people. Without the nitrogen, it's not gonna launch. Without the oxygen, the hospitals aren't going to work. This is the pipeline, right here, that goes from Air Liquide's facility all the way to every one of those launch pads. So, we're passionate about this. We believe that it is vested, because it's been there for 56 years, but we're also passionate about trying to work something out. We actually came up with this proposal. We didn't think it was possible, because there's OSHA requirements to specifically state how many line of sites you can have, what you can do, things of that nature. At our hearing, we had public comment, which was, was great, and the public specifically asked us to see if we could find a workaround. We spent months engineering a workaround, which is the wall you see there. We haven't had time to be able to sit down with the residents. I've sent emails to, to the residents, asked them if they'd like to speak with me before this hearing. We haven't had time to have a community meeting, to sit down with them, make sure this is what they want. Because we don't want to spend a million dollars building this, if it's not what the residents actually want. Some of them might want it, some of them might, some of them might want it moved, we don't know. We're asking for just a couple of weeks to be able to meet with those residents, and this will show you what the wall will do. Right now, when it's running full bore, you've got 70 and 75 dBs, and that's when the LSS is running, because NASA tells us what we have to. The pumper trucks are running, which are very loud. If we get the ability to sit down, get a buy-in with this, create the proposal, we can knock that down to 59 and 65, which should alleviate everyone's concern. If we don't, if we have to go forward with the vested rights, we're gonna have to file a petition. The county's gonna have to respond. The county's going to have to respond. We're going to have to move forward with code enforcement. We're going to have to fight that fight. We're going to have to move forward with takings claims. All of this is very expensive, both for us and for the county, when all we're asking is to just give peace of chance right now, because the more money that Air Liquide has to spend fighting, the less money we have to devote towards a resolution. And with all due respect to everyone here, you never know what a court's going to do. And if Air Liquide wins, they certainly aren't going to build a noise buffering wall with the courts. So all we're asking is to put a pin in this, give peace of chance, let us meet with the homeowners, make sure this is what they really want, and then bring a proposal to the county. And if everybody signs off, it resolves the issue without a whole lot more lawyer fees, legal fees and taking. So, we're asking to table.
More than fair to listen to your argument.
Thank you.
Staff's pretty much stated its position. We're in opposition. Obviously, the board, it's the board's discretion as to what to do as far as table.
All right, do I have a discussion from the board on the motion to table or move forward? Pardon me? Yes, he still gets his time.
Are you soliciting input?
I'm ready for a suggestion. Commissioner Goodson.
Okay, Chair, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we deny vested rights.
No, no, no.
No, no.
Okay.
You've saved me some time there.
Yeah, I'm ready. Just getting through it.
All right, so.
And then, board, just very briefly before the argument, because this is a quasi-judicial matter, if you have any disclosures to make that weren't already made in writing prior to the meeting regarding contacts about this matter outside of the meeting, now would be the time to make those.
I already sent them in.
Okay.
I drove by. I know where it's at.
All right, so, Morris, would you direct us on who should go first?
I think you should hear from Air Liquide's counsel this time.
You have six and 6.8 seconds, six minutes and eight seconds to do your thing.
Can you help me? This presentation should have animations in it, and it doesn't. So, for instance.
Are you sure it's not this one?
No, that's Cliff's. So, for instance, when this comes out, if you have a slideshow.
Sure, sure. That's fine, Betty.
Those aren't, shouldn't be there.
Yeah, we're going to put it on record.
Sorry. Where's the heart of this? I'm not aware.
Okay.
Normally, if it's like that, you should be able to click on it.
Yeah, well, it's not doing it. That's all right. We'll do the best we can with what we got.
The presentation isn't working, so we'll have to wing it a little bit. Chair.
Okay, if you would be kind enough to state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Your Honor, James Rogers and two fam from Acreman here on behalf of Air Liquide. Business address is 1300 Post Oak Boulevard, 23rd floor, Houston, Texas.
Thank you very much. You may proceed.
Thank you. Let me go back to the beginning, that the plant has been there for 56 years doing essentially the same thing. It is only a compressor that takes ambient air, turns it into oxygen, and it turns it into nitrogen. It's worked hand in hand with NASA to ensure that there are safe launches. This was never an issue until Ariel was rezoned in 2002 to residential. Every one of the complainants moved to the facility. The facility did not move to them. I understand that times change and residences change, but they all moved and bought a house next to the airport. Without the nitrogen, you can't launch rockets. You have to blanket each one of those launch pads with nitrogen, or else rockets explode. We get a mandate and a call from NASA that says, run the LSS, and when they do, we have to. We don't have a choice. Without the LSS, the rockets don't go up. I believe firmly that the issue here is that there's just more space activity going on, and we can't control that. But we've been doing the same thing for 60 years, and now we're being penalized because people move to that facility. So we've asked for a vested rights to allow them to continue to do that, and this is the standard, as the commission probably knows. It's an act or omission by the county that we relied upon in good faith to substantially change our position. Now, with respect to the act of the county, it's all in this document right here, and this is in the record as well. There is a file for Air Liquide with a specific note in it that says, Air Liquide would be considered under the old loud and raucous noise standard, not the dB meter readings. That was an act by the county that went into Air Liquide's file, and it was followed for more than 20 years. People would show up whenever a complaint occurred. They would determine whether it was loud or raucous, and they would dismiss complaints. County officials specifically went to Air Liquide at their facility and told them time and time again, don't worry, you're grandfathered under the loud and raucous standard. You don't have to worry about the dB standard. That's the act that Air Liquide relied upon. And it relied upon that act, this is just testimony that'll show you that it was an act, these are some of the code enforcement actions that were closed, there was at least five of them. Some of them closed directly at the zoning official's direction because Air Liquide was vested under the loud and raucous standard. They were grandfathered under the noise complaint. Now, the stated policy was not to hold them to a dB standard, but to hold them to the loud and raucous standard for 25 years, and that's all we're asking to continue at this point in time. What did Air Liquide do to rely upon that? You can see in the record, and there was significant testimony about this, they've poured over $20 million into that facility in order to increase the ability and the pipeline system to provide that nitrogen and to increase the oxygen output, particularly during COVID, because during COVID, Air Liquide supplied 90% of the oxygen that was used in the hospital systems that kept people alive. It is an essential facility. The act or omission was they were told they were under the loud and raucous standard. They relied upon that act or omission by investing 20 some-odd millions of dollars into that facility and continuing its operation. And this is kind of important as well. In a moment of truth, when asked, everyone that was questioned at the hearing was asked whether or not the cars on Courtney Parkway were louder than the facility, and everyone admitted that the cars going down Courtney Parkway are in fact louder than the facility, which again, has been there for 60 years doing the exact same thing. When asked about concern of compatibility with Air Liquide, when people were asking to rezone, they filed letters that specifically said they weren't worried about compatibility because they knew the facility was there. When the residents who are now complaining were asking to rezone, Air Liquide filed a letter and said, hey, this is a bad idea, because there's a facility here, and we're going to get complaints that it's loud. Those concerns were overruled, and immediately after this, the note went into Air Liquide's file that specifically said, don't worry about it, you're under the old loud and raucous standard. It's not a coincidence that the rezoning occurred, that Air Liquide objected, that the residents said, we're fine with this, and then a note specifically went into Air Liquide's file, the act, that said, you're vested with respect to the loud and raucous standard, you don't have to worry about the dB meter. So at the end of the day, our only question is what's fair? Air Liquide's been there for over 50 years. It's quieter than it's ever been. It has to operate more than it ever has because NASA is making us. NASA can't function without us. The hospitals can't function without us. We don't want to be that loud. We have to be. We have no choice. We're trying our best to make a proposal that we want the community to buy in on. We want their support, because while we're passionate about this facility and we're passionate about the space coast, we're also passionate about being good neighbors. We simply want an opportunity to try to resolve this. We don't want to spend a bunch of money here, because if we spend a bunch of money here and we win, there's no incentive to do anything more about it. So, we respectfully request that Air Liquide be held under the loud and raucous standard as a vested right.
Thank you very much, sir.
That's just the note that was in our file there.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
I don't know how to take that down. I can't even get it to work.
10 minutes.
Do I have, do you want a question?
If you want to inquire, that'd be great.
Hold on one second. We've got 10 minutes, right? All right, Commissioner Goodson, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
You stated that you had spent $20 million on upgrades, right?
Yes.
That's in.
Yes, Commissioner.
But you didn't state that you spent any on noise reduction.
In fact, Your Honor, as part of those upgrades.
Not, Your Honor, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner. It's my fault. In fact, Commissioner, as part of the agreement that we made in making some of those upgrades, we installed a large swath of shrubbery that covers the entire north side of Courtney Parkway, and we were, the trees were specifically specified of what we had to plant, and we followed all and planted all of that, and we've offered to plant more trees if anybody, that proposal was shot down. So that's where we came up with the wall proposal.
But how much did you spend on noise reduction for trees or shrubbery?
So, we spent, and we also installed a second wall directly on the other side of this, board may know that as well. We installed a wall directly next to the compressor as a result of the first code enforcement action that we received about three, four years ago. We spent $470,000, I think, on building that wall that changes the tone of the compressor in order to meet the dB standards, but we're still getting complaints, and I don't know the final number of how much money was spent on the trees, but it's, the wall that we've already put in is substantial, and the wall that we're being asked to put in is a million dollars or more.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other questions before we go? Commissioner Taya.
Thank you. According to the sheriff and the special magistrate, quote, "The sound emanating from the plant has serious negative effects on the health and welfare of families in our community. The sound levels are in fact excruciating, unbearable, stressful, horrendous, and unnatural." My question is, do you believe the sheriff and the special magistrate have the ability to make those determinations?
I'm not sure how to answer that question, because I don't know what their individual abilities are, but we presented an expert who went out and did significant noise readings and does this for a living, and he said, listen, if anything is excruciating and terrible, it's when an 18-wheeler goes down Courtney, because that exceeds this by 25 decibels. That's the thing that's excruciating.
So, Mr.
Go ahead, Commissioner Taya.
My understanding, and I think you mentioned it, you filed for vested rights in 2020, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner. COVID.
So, the, during COVID, whatever, so, how many decibels have you reduced, you know, for the part of three, best part of three, three-plus years? How many decibels have you, your mitigation? We talked about $400,000, but I'm just, for sound levels, how much was decreased?
So, the installation, I wish I had a picture of it. The installation of the noise barrier that goes around the compressor, the loudest piece of equipment on the plant is the compressor, because it's a very large compressor, takes ambient air.
I'm just looking for decibels, right? Because that's a measure.
Yeah, so, and here's the interesting part, Commissioner, and I'm not trying to be difficult. Tone is as important as the volume of the noise. So certain tones, even though they're lower or more excruciating to human beings, than louder tones if they're just flat. So what the wall did was change what was a very shrill tone into a flat tone, and then also brought the ambient dB down by about five or so. So, it lowered by five by putting that wall there, but it also changed the tone on the decibel scale so that it's more palatable to your human ear. So it's like a hum as opposed to a more shrill tone.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Felmer.
Is noise a form of pollution?
I'm not a pollution expert, Commissioner. I would say.
Do you think most people would consider noise a form of pollution?
It's possible, but when you move to something like that, that's where I have a problem with you suddenly calling it pollution, Commissioner Felmer.
I don't know if I'm suddenly calling it. I think that you said earlier that their business has increased greatly over the years. Is that fair to say?
The duration, the number of times that we're required to run because NASA tells us to run.
I understand that.
Has increased, but the plant does exactly the same thing that it always has.
Okay, but, but it's, there's more activity going there. They're producing more.
Because there's more rockets going up.
I get that part. Do you, would it be fair to say that homeowners have a right to peace and quiet inside their own home?
If they meet certain requirements and don't necessarily move to the nuisance, Commissioner Felmer.
Just trying to understand where the line is, because I understand that my rights end where your rights begin, and I think that's what this discussion is. So where is that, that line? Is it Courtney?
Well, I'm not sure that I understand that, but where we would be building the noise barrier would be on the north side of Courtney Parkway to mitigate the noise.
Your ability to, you know, have noise coming from your property, I'm trying to figure out, where does that end? Where is that line?
Well, the code, the code that we're asking to be vested under loud and raucous says that the loud and raucous noise, I believe that the perimeter, it's taken from a certain place past the right-of-way, if that makes sense. You have to be a certain parameter away from the right-of-way of the property in order to determine if it's loud and raucous, but all of that is in the code.
I have an understanding that homeowners have a right to peace and quiet inside their own home in the middle of the night while they're trying to sleep. So, I think that that line ends at their bedroom wall at 10 o'clock at night. So, that's all that I'm trying to establish there. You said that if we move forward with this today, that would impede you working with the nearby neighborhood to try to make things better? I don't, I'm not sure I understand that.
I don't believe it would impede us working, continuing to try to be as good of a community member to that community and the county as we possibly can be. It's not going to impede it. What it's going to do is drive up the cost on everyone, which at some point in time creates uneconomic situations.
So, us moving forward with this today will cause litigation?
Well, we'll have to.
At that expense?
We would have to appeal, and then we would have to also deal with the code enforcement action, and then we would also have to proceed with takings claims if that happens as well. So there's just, there's a lot of litigation.
Or the noise is reduced and an agreement is made with the nearby neighbors. That's a possibility.
That is our ardent hope, and all we are asking is to give peace of chance.
Okay.
Morris, your name's up here on this board. Did you want to comment?
I'm sorry, that's an old request, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I think it's Cliff's turn now. Oh, we, go ahead. Don't we have to hear from Cliff, or did you have? Oh, I didn't see a light from Rita, down at the bottom. Okay, Rita, question.
Just for Mr. Richardson, could you, for people that are listening, give a summary of the special magistrate's opinion for us, just so we can clarify that what we're.
Thank you, Rita. That's a very good question.
So to summarize briefly, the special magistrate found that Air Liquide did not meet the county's requirements for determination of vested rights. She made specific factual findings and conclusions of law, which I'm sure Mr. Repinger will elaborate on a little more, but she did not find specific acts or omissions made by the county on which Air Liquide substantially changed its position and reliance thereon that justified a determination of vested rights. Further, she found that granting vested rights would be harmful to the public health, safety, and welfare, or really the converse of that, that Air Liquide did not establish that granting vested rights would not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. So, those were, those were her findings, and the recommended order, as you know, contains extensive findings of fact and testimony on which that was based.
I have a question, Morris. I don't know whether it would be to Mr. Replinger or to you, but I know that Aaron Pead had produced an expert witness in regard to this. Did the county prove any, bring any experts in, Cliff?
We didn't bring in an expert witness because we felt like that was an issue as far as the noise component to be addressed at the code enforcement stage. This was so, this proceeding was solely related to vested rights and whether the petitioner had established a entitlement to vested rights, so we didn't believe that that was necessary.
All right, you're up then, Cliff. Oh, no, do we need, we don't need a motion for anything. We've got to hear Cliff first, now, right?
No, sir, you're able to hear argument from Cliff. I was just going to say what Cliff had said, that establishing whether or not there is a noise violation or a violation of county standards is going to be an issue for future code enforcement proceedings, depending on whether or not the board finds vested rights in this case.
And our code enforcement people have experts there?
Well, they have equipment to measure sound, and they can put on testimony, and that'll be determined by a special magistrate at some point in the future.
And all that equipment will be up to date and able to receive proper readings, correct?
Correct, but again, that's not before this board today.
Okay, got it. Cliff, it's your turn.
Did you want to take five, or you don't want to take a break?
No, let's go.
Okay, let's go.
We've got a lot to do today, and we've got more after this.
Great. Thank you again. Again, my name is Cliff Repinger, attorney with White Bird, representing Planning and Development Department staff. If I can access, I don't know if I can, can I access that?
Don, is Logan or somebody being able to fix that?
There we go.
Or you got it.
How do I move through this? Let's see.
Bad timing on this one, that's for sure.
Slide show, here we go. Maybe this is it. Oh, you got me. Hey, look at that. All right.
Ah!
So I know there's a lot of information here. This was a four-year process that played out. It culminated in a public hearing that occurred over two days, November 30th and December 1st, where the special magistrate took testimony, heard, considered evidence, and so there's a lot of information that's in the record. I don't want to belabor it and go through the whole proceeding and everything. If you, if you all have questions, obviously we will address that. But essentially, the proceeding was a proceeding under 62507 of the county code, which relates to vested rights. There are three things that the applicant or that the petitioner needs to prove to establish vested rights. One is an act or omission of the county. Two is good faith reliance on that, that act or omission, and three is a substantial chain in position of the petitioner based on that act or omission and the good faith reliance on it. There's a fourth component of imminent peril to public health, safety, and welfare that was also addressed by the special magistrate as part of the consideration. Essentially, the, the special magistrate issued a 23-page proposed order, which you have in your agenda package, which goes into great detail about the factual findings that were made over those two days of hearing, and then concludes that the petitioner did not meet its burden of establishing those three elements under the county code. Just to go into a little bit of the facts related to some of the things that you all have talked about, whoops, if I could, can I go back?
Hit the back arrow right here.
Whoops, just go back like that. Okay, cool. Whoops. There you go. So what you see before you, the picture, the circle, that's the wall that you were talking about that was installed. This plant has been around since 1968, I believe. It went through a number of different expansions and a rezoning. The critical point here was that in 2002, the owners needed to rezone the property to heavy industrial, and they needed a conditional use permit in order to continue the plant operations and expand the plant operations. And what you see on that picture, to the, I guess, looking at it, the left of the circle was where an area was, and behind the circle is where the plant was expanded. And if you look, this, this was the, the site plan that was submitted in 2002 with, or at, at or around the same time that the CUP was applied for and granted. And so there was a expand, a plant expansion that was done. There were several plant expansions that have been done since that time. But in 2002, when the applicant apply, or when the prior property owner applied for the conditional use permit, they had to get a binding development plan in addition to the approvals that they obtained for the conditional use and the rezoning. And at that time, if you look at paragraph six of the binding development plan, which is up before you, the developer owner agreed that it shall comply with all regulations and ordinances of Brevard County. We went through great detail at the hearing of establishing the legislative history for the noise ordinances of Brevard County. There are, they are found in various places. Under chapter 46 is the loud and raucous standard. The decibel standards are under 622771, and then there are the same decibel standards that were in that section also referenced in the conditional use permit criteria under 621901C2C, I believe. And so the applicant at the time that they filed this application for the conditional use permit and obtained the, and submitted the binding development plan was well aware of what the standards were, that there were decibel standards that were applied. The county's position was that not only did the, not only was the applicant aware of that, but the application itself had language on it that indicated, and you can see here, I'm bringing up a copy of the page of the application, where the applicant is advised that it needs to meet all of the standards, including those under 621901 related to the decibel standards that were in place at the time. And there were, there are numerous sections in the CUP application where the applicant is advised that those decibel standards apply. Now, the decibel standards did, were modified over time, and the most recent change to the county noise ordinance was just recently in 2023, but the applicant was aware at the time that they applied for the CUP that these decibel standards would apply to its facility. Now, the petitioner made reference to the, the acts or omissions of the county on which the petitioner relies. There were five of them that were cited to, by the special magistrate. It's on page 15 of the proposed order. One was the note for the file on performance standards. That was found to be, the special magistrate found that that was, and the county's position and assertion was, that was an informal policy of code enforcement that your former code enforcement manager had written into a notebook for himself as far as how to interpret the code. That note was not specifically, and the county's assertion was, that it was not specifically related to Air Lake. It was, however, included with a letter from the county code enforcement staff, Mr. Long, to one of the complainants when a code enforcement case was brought in 2018. At the beginning of that case, the code enforcement officer attached the note to a letter that was sent to the complainant, essentially saying, "The facility is grandfathered, and we cannot proceed in code enforcement against this facility in the way that we would like to proceed under the code." Again, that was sent to the complainant, not to the petitioner, to the complainant, and that the record showed that the petitioner had not demonstrated that they were ever aware of the fact that the note either existed or of that letter until, I think the applicant, the witness that testified on behalf of the petitioner testified that first time he had seen that note was the day before the hearing. So they never, the petitioner never established that they actually had seen that note such that they could rely on it. The third thing that they claimed to rely on was the notes to the code enforcement file, and we talked about that, and the code enforcement officer gave, Mr. Long gave testimony to the fact that he was unaware of the fact that the binding development plan existed, that there was a conditional use permit that applied to the facility, any of those things at the time that he had written to the complainant advising them that the facility was grandfathered. The fourth thing was continued permitting by the county. There was never any indication in the record that the county ever indicated specifically to the petitioner that they were exempt from any code requirement that would apply to the permitting, and the lack of enforcement of the county. Admittedly, there were some code enforcement cases that had been opened over time between 2002 and now that have been closed, but there was no record evidence, no testimony, no evidence presented that they were closed for any particular reason, that the petitioner had been told that they were grandfathered, that the county believed that the facility was grandfathered. It was just shown that they were unsupported claims, and so the county could not establish those claims, and so those code enforcement cases were closed. And so if you find on page 16 of the proposed order, what the special magistrate found was that the petitioner presented no evidence that it had knowledge of the letter, essentially that Mr. Mopin, the manager for the facility, had no personal knowledge of seeing the letter of any representation from the county, and he could not explain how the petitioner would detrimentally rely on, on that, on that position because he was not aware of it. The other thing that the order found, and Commissioner Tabia made reference to this, was that there is a threat of imminent peril to the surrounding community based on the noise that's generated by the facility. There were a number of different members of the public that came up and gave testimony toward the end of the proceeding about how the noise generated by the plant affects them. And so the staff is recommending that you approve of the recommended order today and allow the county to proceed into a code enforcement realm to enforce against the facility.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions?
If you have any questions.
Mr. Repinger. Okay, thanks, Cliff.
Thanks.
I have one quick question. When were the houses built? Were they there when the--
I can answer that.
Yeah.
So the majority of them were built after 2002. There was one or two house, the farmhouses that were farther away from--
And the plant was there then?
Thirty years after the plant was there would be the first house. The plant was there for 30 years.
All right. So they built a house recognizing that there was going to be noise there?
Yes, Chairman.
Got it.
Every one of them.
It's different, though, because of all of the changes in code and the decibels and all that other stuff. So I reckon, I just wanted to get an idea whether or not, when they were built--
And we're not saying no code applies. Our only request is--
I understand, I understand. I just was trying to get my arms around it. All right, Morris, should we enter into discussion and try to vote, or? Well, we need to, I want to make sure I'm not, if there's anything else that needs to be done before we do that.
Yes, sir. So at this time, the board would consider the proposed vested rights order that was issued by the special magistrate, so the board can certainly discuss that. And then based upon that record and the argument of the parties you heard today, as well as the findings set forth in the magistrate's order, either grant vested rights as requested by Air Lake, grant vested rights with conditions, or deny vested rights, and in so doing, again, either adopt the special magistrate's proposed order or direct my office to prepare an order for you to enter subsequent to the motion being voted on.
Thank you very much, Morris. Do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make one, Mr. Chairman, to deny vested rights and adopt the special magistrate's proposed order.
Is there a second? Commissioner Pritchett, would you take the floor, please?
Can--
Do you want to? We're right in the middle of a motion. Is there going to be a second or not?
I was going to ask for, see if I had a friendly amendment on this one.
Sure. You go ahead.
I would like to add to that motion immediately proceed with code enforcement investigation of noise complaint treating the case's health and safety violation to the extent permitted by law. Should a violation be sustained, to seek the maximum fine permitted by law under the circumstances.
I have no problems with that. It's a good friendly motion.
Okay, now, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commit, okay. Motion by Commissioner Goodson, amended by Commissioner Tabia, seconded by Commissioner Felmer. All right, discussion. Commissioner Pritchett. I'm going to, I'm going to vote with Commissioner Goodson on this, but I'll tell you, I got major, major heartburn with this, and I think everybody on this board does right now. So it's in everybody's best interest that even though we're going to do what the special, if, if the vote goes that way, for everybody to get their heads together and figure out what the hell's going on, because we got to get this solved fast. It looks to me like there's major, major issues there. If, if they have to stop rocket launches here, and the rocket launch capital of the world, bad news bears. If we have to stop oxygen from coming into hospitals, bad news bears. There's no, there's no winner here. So what I'm asking is, I'm begging everybody to please move hastily to get this done and get it resolved some way. I know the magistrate's got its saying, and that's, we're going to abide by that, but if the vote goes that way, but we got to get this, we got to get some stuff done. I, I know you have heartburn over this, we all do. I'm sorry, the, we're closed on this. All right, any more discussion from the board? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Judge Crawford is back there.
Okay.
I have to know if we got one quick footnote, and I think we go to the courthouse.
All right. Thank you very much. H8. All right, who's handling this? Mark, go ahead. H8, H8.
Commissioners, H8 is a resolution exchange agreement and utility easements between Brevard County and Eduda and Sons. It's north of, south of Charlie Cobal Way in Viera, and it would also provide the chair to execute the attached resolution and any necessary documents. There's, this was put out as far as public advertisement, and we've received no comments.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Felmer.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tabia. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right. We're going to--
J1.
J1.
So Commissioners, staff is requesting board direction on the Moore Justice Center expansion study. Five and a half million dollars was provided by state appropriations this fiscal year, and another 250,000 was set aside by BCSO's budget. The grant with the state requires the chief judge and our board chair to sign off on the project plan. I've asked Mr. Tom Potts from Sealing Architects to provide a very short brief on the options. Seiling was competitively selected by RFQ based on their portfolio of judicial center projects.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Tom Potts. I'm a resident of Brevard County, address is 3072 Trial Court. I'm pleased to be with you this morning, and pleased to present the results of the Moore Justice Center expansion study.
Pardon me?
It's comprehensive. We started in November, and the work extended through until early spring. We had a good participa, participation from both the courts and public works and facilities and so forth, studying facilities, looking for options, getting to the bottom, really, of what was necessary. The initial project objectives, pretty sound, to be able to develop an understanding of what the critical space needs and operational needs of the facility might be. You can see them indicated there. Additional jury, jury room space, that's jury assembly space, where the capacity of the jury assembly space is very limited right now. Additional court facility or courtroom space, there's a security issue with the way some of the, and a demand for court space in a more secure manner. The third bullet point there was the consolidation of criminal courts in the Moore Justice Center from the Melbourne and the Titusville facilities because of the Moore Justice Center being the newer facility is designed to better standards for a criminal facility, and I think there are some other operational needs that that facility met. And finally, the law library consolidation resolution, what we would do with the law library. So those were the primary objectives. Other objectives kind of rose during the study. We studied, we started with five, and we ended up with fundamentally two options that are, were the most workable. Market indicated what the budget was at the beginning. We were trying to work within that budget and meet the objectives as best we could. So you can see the option one versus option two. Fundamentally, they're, they're basically the same. Both suggest a new jury assembly space with a capacity of 275, which meets projected numbers. And then we'll skip down to law library, law library consolidation. Both of those do that. We determined that we needed some additional space for clerk, criminal evidence storage, and then the, we were able to bring online Melbourne and Titusville courthouses for full use. And so we go back to the red. Those are fundamentally the differences between the two. So on option one, you end up with, the facility can end up growing with two 720-square-foot hearing rooms where option, excuse me, that's option one. Option two allows us a 700-square-foot hearing room, but the difference is that there's a 1,500-square-foot jury-capable courtroom, which requires the relocation of the witness center. That option provides, in my opinion, a longer, better value for the county's money, a longer life of the facility. Anytime that you can get a jury-capable courtroom added, it just provides much greater flexibility. So you can see the difference in the project cost, 5.175 million versus 6.144. Option two takes a couple more months to complete as compared to option one. Another way of looking at it is, if we go back to the available budget and what the estimated project cost, option one would leave about $400,000 on the table, where option two would require some additional funding. We'll say that during our process, due diligence, we, we use professional cost estimators, had back and forth with those folks. You can see the, on the right side, all the bullet points of what the construction cost would include. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Felmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Really, less, less of a question, more of a comment at this point. I'll just say that I worked on this project sort of as the board's representative to, to go through this process where we had the stakeholders give input, and just so that you know, this all started because we received five and a half million dollars from the legislature for upgrades at the Moore Justice Center. And so we were trying to stay within that budget, and eventually, I think we, a lot of us believe, the courts believe, that option number two looks a little bit further to the future, and for the additional $554,000, we'll get-- looks a little bit further to the future, and for the additional $554,000, we'll get out of that also a jury-capable courtroom. And that's where the courts and everybody is trying to go. So I believe that's the option, Frank, that we're looking at, right?
Attorney Manager.
Thank you. I do want to say that under the grant, one of the components of the grant is that you have to have the chief judge's approval. And we worked very hard with the chief judge and to get both option A, option one, and option two, something that he would be agreeable to. However, in speaking with the various other stakeholders, including the clerk, et cetera, we all agreed that option two, from a safety perspective and a long-term perspective, would be a better option for us. So county staff, we are prepared to obtain the additional funding that's necessary under option two, if the board so chooses, and put it as part of next year's budget. We're planning to use the cash carry forward that we already are anticipating being there. So a financial constraint would not be a concern to the board, because we still plan to move forward with everything that we know that the board is interested in moving forward in next year's budget, without that being a detriment.
Okay, thank you very much. Rachel, your honor, are you all in line with all this? Your thumbs up? Okay.
All right. Sir, can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
For option two.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Felton, seconded by Commissioner Tobias. Any more discussion in regards to this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you so very much.
Congratulations, your honor.
All your hard work.
You prevailed.
Yeah. Commissioner, thank you for all your help here. All right, let's move on, if we could, please. Okay. Amanda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item J two is the potential expansion of our petroleum remediation or restoration program, which has been administered by Natural Resources for the state for about 37 years. Over that time, we've expanded to include other counties, so we oversee, oversee cleanup sites for Indian River, St. Lucie, Martin, and Okeechobee counties as well. Last week, we got a phone call from DEP asking us to take on Volusia. There are a lot of cleanup sites in Volusia, and that would more than double our program. If it's a will of, of the commission, we think staff is up to the task that we can ramp up the program. Our contract would increase proportionally to cover all costs, all startup costs, et cetera.
Thank you. We had quite a lively discussion in regards to this in the briefing, and everybody on staff seemed to think that it's running very smoothly, and that I think we were all getting smiles, saying, "We can do this." Is that pretty accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner second, Tobias seconds it. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thanks for your hard work. All right, J three. Letter to the Honorable Pete Budcheck and Secretary Transportation on supporting the Brightline train station. Com, Commissioner, don't do that again, Jason. Sandra Sullivan, come on up. That always puts a smile on your face, though, doesn't it?
Sure does, sir. Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So I am respectfully requesting a modification to the letter. So I'm going to read the section. The letter states, "As, as the chair representing the Brevard Board of County Commissioners, I write to express my vigorous support for the Cocoa Multimodal Passenger Rail Station and Rail Project." And I take exception to that description. And I'm going to allege that there is misrepresentation to the public on the agenda item when the county did their 5 million, and hence, in the communication to the federal government, we should be, have some specificity. So this slide was put up for the approval of, of the rail for the 5 million from the county. And as you see, the total is 75 million for the whole thing. City of Cocoa, Space Coast TPO, Space Coast TDO, state and federal, 49.5 million dollars. And that's the part I, I take exception to. Because what was presented at the, at the Tourism Development Council is that the project, which is the rail project, is 45 million dollars and not 75 million dollars. 45, 75, big difference. So what this 75 million dollars is for, according to their presentation, residential and commercial housing, restaurants, hotel, and a passive recreation on that 90-acre site. So about 7,900 square feet is the rail station, and the rest is mixed-use, mixed-use development. So when we're using taxpayers' dollars, and a presentation is made saying that the estimated total project cost for the station, surface parking, and track infrastructure needed, the total cost is estimated to be 75 million. No, at the meeting, it was presented as 45 million, with the mixed-use being 75 million. So I would respectfully request that this letter be modified to request up to a total funding of 45 million dollars for the project, so that we are not using public funds, which ultimately, we as taxpayers pay, one way or other in our income taxes, et cetera, that we, that we adjust this to the appropriate amount with some specific numbers in there. And just as a, a little visual, you might find it interesting that the rail entities are the ones that have been funding the affordable housing for lobbying.
Thank you very much. Discussion on the letter.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, let's go move on to J four. J four. Advisory Board Appointee background screening. Who's handling this?
Mr. Chair.
Pardon me?
Can I grab it, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you can. Absolutely.
Thank you. And I, I see that the clerk and comptroller, Rachel Sadoff, is in the audience here. Certainly want to thank her for helping out with the advisory aboard appointees in the screening. Ms. Sadoff is able to run these checks at no additional cost to the county, and has, has volunteered to help out with this. It is extremely important to run these checks. The board requires our grantees to follow proper background check procedures, and we need to be providing an equal level of protection. Over the years, we've discovered, my office has discovered, quite a few appointees who have convictions which make it inappropriate for them to serve on certain boards. I'm not going to go over the names, but some of these have been battery, domestic violence, possession of cocaine, possession of MDMA, many of these being felony. So these are not just minor, minor convictions. That being said, if we can get these done at no additional cost, I think this is a great solution for everyone. Utilizing the clerk's office for this function with the approval of the county manager makes my office truth finder subscription redundant, and has been canceled as of last week. So I appreciate all the work with, that's being done. The result will be a savings of $32.04 per month, while continuing to ensure the advisory board, advisory board appointees do not have concerning criminal records. Again, this was a great idea, and I appreciate the clerk helping to step forward, solve this solution, and save taxpayer money. So I will have a motion here. The motion is simple, to move, to approve the proposed board policy for background screening of individuals being appointed to the county advisory boards.
Is there a second?
I have.
I, I want to get a second, then we'll get discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded by, motion by Commissioner Tobias, seconded by Commissioner Felton now. I think Ms. Pritchett had her light on first, I believe. Okay. Did you have a light on?
I did.
Thought you did.
I just wanted to mention that I'm, I'm glad you were able to, Rachel, thank you so much for this. It's a good idea. I know back from the very beginning, when you started actually doing this, we didn't think about doing it, and I really appreciate your work that you and your office did on catching a few of the candidates that was not a good fit for positions we were using. So I just want to give you that, kudos on that one. So thank you for that, but this is a better route, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Goodson.
Thank you, Chair. We're not going to go after people that might have had minor fractions at young ages. This is only going after felons, or those, is that correct, Commissioner?
This just, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
This just, this just authorizes the county manager to do that. Ultimately, that will be up to the discretion of this board to make that ultimate. I, I certainly don't think, in my humble opinion, that we should go after people that make minor infractions, driving infractions. However, again, felonies that have come up here, I think are pretty serious, no matter what age they were made. But again, that would be ultimately up to us. This would just provide us with that information without going through my office.
Right, because I wouldn't want to ruin somebody that had a minor fraction, you know, and offend them or embarrass them. Because, you know, we all have stuff, some of us have been caught, and some of us haven't. Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, any more discussion? Motion on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Can we take a five-minute again?
Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Commissioner Felton's request, and then we will get into reports.
Yeah, go ahead, buddy.
And public comments. Thank you.[1332.23] All right, we're moving on to the second phase of public comments, and Austin Whitsett,
Good afternoon. Almost.
So, my name is Austin Whitsett from Moore County. I'd like to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak today. So, I'm here to discuss a matter that concerns not only the integrity of our institutions, but also the education and future of our children. As the rocket launch capital of the world, as it was put earlier, we must demand greater transparency and honesty from NASA, especially regarding the information and interactions they have with students in our county schools. This is especially true when the activities of NASA are being utilized as a primary factor of decisions made by the board. NASA has, of course, been actively engaging with our community, particularly through activities at Kennedy Space Center, as well as interaction with our children in school, highlighted in a Florida Today article, Reverend of Brevard, students participate in astronaut training. So, while such initiatives are commendable in principle, there are serious concerns about the accuracy and legitimacy of the information being presented, especially to children. It's come to our attention that these astronauts may be engaging in deceptive practices. For example, multiple instances have been documented where objects are consistently seen dropping in free fall on the ISS, which is, of course, allegedly in zero-G environment. Forensics video analysis has been conducted and subsequently proven that the physics observed in these videos are consistent with that observed in zero-G plane flights and gravity environments on Earth. It is thus scientifically impossible they were actually filmed in space. Further, such analysis has revealed the use of augmented reality, overlays, harnesses, video manipulation, as well as consistent communication delays, inconsistent. These anomalies raise legitimate and important questions about the authenticity of the space activities portrayed by NASA. Furthermore, these concerns are not being addressed openly. When citizens attempt to raise these issues, particularly through online platforms, the comment sections are often turned off, stifling the public discourse and direct violation of First Amendment rights. As a public entity, NASA has a responsibility to maintain open channels for communication and accountability. This effectively amounts to the children in our county schools being actively propagandized, while there exists an outright suppression of the public's ability to redress grievances. In this country, we do not allow our government to forcibly indoctrinate and propagandize our children through the public education system by outright prohibiting open dialogue and freedom of information. This is America, not North Korea. Our children are being taught to trust and look up to these astronauts. They deserve to receive accurate and honest information. I urge the board to stand for transparency and accountability, as well as the Constitution, certainly when it comes to speaking to our children. They have refused, NASA must address the allegations openly, directly, and with specificity, providing concrete evidence to dispel these concerns or launch transparent disclosure. They have refused to do this for years, rather worked with big tech to hide behind a wall of suppression and censorship. If there is nothing to hide, why are they hiding? You can also go to Addit NASA to investigate, to look into the investigation.
Try to shave 10 seconds off for my antics here. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Justin, I live at 103 South Osceola, Orlando 32801. Good morning, Commissioners. Today, I come here asking for your help, but first, a little backstory. I think we all remember the Challenger explosion that took place in 1986 that tragically took the lives of all seven astronauts on board. It launched not too far from where we're standing here today. Well, the interesting thing is, a couple decades later, this thing called the Internet came about, and someone allegedly found almost all of those astronauts alive and well, many using the same exact names. As you can see here, we have Challenger astronaut Judith Resnick, and also Challenger, I'm sorry, Judith Resnick Yale Law Professor, Michael J. Smith, the pilot of the Challenger astronaut, and also professor at University of Wisconsin, now retired, Michael J. Smith, Commander Dick Scobie, who is now president of Cows and Trees. Now, if you'll notice, they all have the exact same faces 30-some-odd-years later, the same exact name, and they are the same age. Now, we all have a doppelganger out there, right? No big deal. But to have the same face, the same age, and the same exact name is extremely rare, so where I could only find one case in the last 120 years. And we're supposed to believe that three people from one spaceflight have exact look-alikes that have the same age and same exact names? This, ladies and gentlemen, is beyond statistically impossible. Ms. Resnick was questioned at Yale by a journalist, and she panicked and ran from the camera. Why? Mr. Michael J. Smith was also questioned, and he said, "Yeah, we look alike, but that's not me." You can see both of these exchanges in a film called Level With Me, and you can be the judge.
Sir, I'm gonna have to stop you.
Mr. Scobie not only has... Sir, this is a public comment.
I know what it is, sir, I'm very familiar with the public comment.
Okay.
And part of the public comment is, is that you're only allowed to address things that we have jurisdiction over. We have no juris-
I have a direct request at the end of this that is in your purview, sir, please.
Sir?
I do, can we hold the time, please? I have a direct request that-
Just, listen to me very carefully. Mr. Richardson, would you give an opinion in regards to this, please?
Yes, public comment is reserved for issues or topics that are under the jurisdiction or control of the county commission, or that are relevant to the business of the county commission. So if your request at the end is going to explain why that falls into any of this, make that request now before you continue.
Absolutely. So, as I was saying, I'll just end it with what I was ending with, but the ask is that Ms. Pritchett, who knows very well about questioning science, whether it be COVID or fluoride, I'm just asking you all to question the science here. Your, Goodson and Pritchett, your district covers the Kennedy Space Center. This launched from the Kennedy Space Center. You have the ability to help me in sounding the alarm and asking the federal government for help. If this is contained in your area, I should be able to at least address something that happened here, don't you agree?
That's not within the jurisdiction or authority of the county commission.
Thank you very much.
Will you let me finish for at least 10 seconds?
No, sir, you're finished. Thank you.
Thank you for taking away my freedom of speech today in here.
I did not take away your freedom of speech.
Yes, you did.
There's a, I don't want to hear it from you people down here.
Just because this is an uncomfortable topic?
Stop, officers, please remove this man from the room.
You just violated the First Amendment.
I didn't violate the First Amendment, he violated the rules.
This is a limited public forum, and the meeting is for the purpose of the business of the county commission. It's not for this purpose.
Now, if you want to go, if you want to go too, take him out too. Officer, take him out also.
Let's just, everyone just calm down, they can leave willingly.
... about NASA.
NASA is not our jurisdiction, sir.
You violated the First Amendment, my brother.
Thank you very much for your opinion.
Yeah, maybe try reading it out again. These astronauts are alive, by the way, look it up. You can't have three doppelgangers. You can't. Same face, same name, same age. It's impossible, look it up, statistically impossible.
Palm Point Behavioral Center is right down the street, that's where I suggest you go.
Just because you think this is a mental problem, I should still be able to talk. It's your opinion, sir.
Have a nice day.
You too, thank you.
Wow. Here we go. Doug Simon.
Tough act to follow.
Pardon me, sir?
Tough act to follow.
I wonder if I could address the comments that Mr. Pritchett made before I start the clock?
I would appreciate if Ms. Pritchett was here while you made those comments, but I suppose we can move forward with it. Is, did she take a break?
It's just a couple of polite comments I want to make.
Polite comments I would really like to hear today.
Okay.
I would be thrilled with polite comments.
I haven't been in the mood for it, but now I'll-
All right, go ahead, sir.
Doug, over here, tough and sort of my mood, my-
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, addressing something you said about residents requested that the trees be cut. I've sort of been following around as they've been cutting trees, so I'm quite familiar with what's been going on, on foot, on bicycle, and on my little scooter. And when the trees, I'll just hold this up for a second, look like this, that's when people request that he takes it all the way down to the ground. It's not when they have a nice, beautiful oak tree, and they say, "Just cut my tree down." So he kind of forgot to mention that part, and that's kind of important. The next thing that he mentioned was the school bus. The reason the school bus in the back of it just nicked the tree, and it was actually one of these trees, it was probably this one right here. Oh, I have a picture of it, I can, here you go. That's the tree the school bus nicked, and it did it because it was avoiding the equipment that was being used, actually a crane, to cut down the trees. It wasn't even the regular company that was hired. This tree was so huge that they needed a crane, the school bus tried to squeeze past it, and that's what happened. And just my commentary is that if this was a whole tree, it would have caught the driver's attention, not a stump sticking up. All right, next. Now to get, now to get to what I was here for. Commissioner Steele, two months ago, I had asked you for an answer on why Bernath was looking to take our land with this adverse possession deal with the maps, the maintenance maps. You asked me to, he wouldn't answer my question sitting there. You asked me to send you an email, you would send an email to him, he would send it back to you, you give him an answer, I never got an answer. Never heard of it.
I never received an email from him.
Well, I sent it to two addresses, the public one you have and the private one you gave me.
Did not receive either one.
Well, too late now.
I apologize, but did not get either one.
Okay. Now, now that I have no time left, I'd like to start-
Go ahead, you've got some time left, what else do you want to talk about?
Okay, well, basically, I'm very concerned about this land grab. I need to know more about the, what he's planning on doing. He decimated the trees, destroyed them, and I want to know what he's doing because from reading the map, and I know how to read maps because that's something I do, blueprints, he's taken four feet of my property, which includes my advanced septic system, which I have. And if I have no septic system, I have no house. And if I have no house, Brevard County, you break it, you buy it. So I just need to get a handle on what's going on with that, before the same thing happens that happened with the trees.
Okay, unfortunate, and I appreciate your calm manner and the way that you expressed all this, that's very respectful today, and I really, really appreciate it. We're not allowed to discuss an answer to your question here. If you have a legal question, all I can tell you is you might want to seek the advice of an attorney. So other than, other than that, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, I can say that we did have an attorney with the trees, and we did get injunction, and we were told to put up $100,000 bond, so it, it's like-
I apologize for that, I don't have an answer to your question, and I can't respond anymore.
Okay.
But thank you, thank you very much.
Can I start off with my original spiel?
Pardon me?
Can I start off with my original spiel now that I answered his questions, or his statements? I actually had a prepared thing I wanted to say.
No, sir, unfortunately, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Katie Delaney. Katie.
Thank you.
Did you speak earlier in public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, I would like to speak about the decorum rules. Part of the reason why we have gotten to the place where we are today is because the lack of respect and the lack of trust the people feel in the audience, and frankly, at home. And you all are not above the people. And so, when people are being mocked as they come up to the stand, as people are being told, "Oh, you're a good little girl today because you're quiet," that's absolutely going against your own decorum rules. So what do you expect when the citizens come here outraged? Next, I'd like to talk about the gaslighting that's been going on about the tree issues. Commissioner Steele, you yourself sat here, March 12th, and looked at the staff and said to them, "We're not going to be cutting any trees, are we?" And I can play you back the video. Basically, gaslighting the public, and here we are, two weeks later. Tell me how this is not cutting down the trees. Of course, the citizens want these stumps gone. Who would want to look at that? As speakers came up earlier today, and were talking about the therapy that goes on that road, the importance of these trees for not only the environment, but for the road itself, the erosion of this road. I mean, there's a sign there, I was just there this weekend, there's a sign there that says, "Caution, road floods." So we're going to take out more oaks because of that? And I understand that your arborists say that, that these trees were not healthy, but the people who have been suing you all for the past decade, they have arborists that say that they were healthy. And frankly, from the look of these stumps, they look pretty healthy to me. He didn't get to talk about this.
[laughing]
It's a healthy tree.
Okay.
And again, this is not solely about trees. This is about degrading the public trust. This is about demoralizing a whole community because they love that street. I personally grew up on that street, because my husband grew up there, and we met when we were in high school. So we take our kids there on a pretty regular basis to go down that street, and now it's The public trust is eroded, and you guys need to fix that. Thank you.
And the public disrespect that comes from this, don't tell me what I can do and what I can't do, Katie Delaney.
No, sir, I'm sorry. And by the way, I'm a candidate for-
Officers, remove her from the room, please. What the hell is wrong with you, Katie? Look, I am not going to let these rooms turn into complete disruption. It's not going to happen.
It's disruption.
Thank you very much. All right, Stell Bailey.
Stell Bailey, Cocoa, Florida. Whereas the citizens of Brevard County, Florida, have long suffered the plight of living with outdated trees along the shorelines, whereas these particular trees have stood for hundreds of years, taking up pollution intended for the water, soil, and air, perpetuated weakness in those performing outdoor recreational activities by casting shade on the street, and provided shelter to birds and other varmints that excrete waste and have made undeniably unpleasant noises. In addition, homeless rogue raccoons, nutty squirrels, and the constant danger of gravity-fed acorn attacks are no longer a threat to constituents. Whereas the Brevard County Commissioners courageously eradicated these nuisances by way of directing a team of chainsaw-wielding contractors to cut them to mere stumps, thereby eradicating the constant leaf litter that these now unalive oaks can no longer filthy our roadways with. Whereas your evident support of jobs like lumberjacking and industries like mulch manufacturing has truly provided a valuable service for our community. By ridding our communities of water-hogging trees along our shorelines, we further support the boating industry by preventing anti-flood measures. Whereas the act of sprucing up the full view of the power lines promotes a better image of FPL and reinforces the dependency all Floridians have on electric grid during the high-heat months. By removing the darkness of the shade, the heat island effect of concrete and asphalt we have so laboriously maintained through the years can finally rise to its full potential temperature. Whereas the citizens stood together and begged them not to do it so they could selfishly protect their aging septic tanks, they did it anyway, showing strength and honor and unity in the faces of the allergy-ridden, confused, claret-in-taken residents. Whereas the clearly reckless citizens whom were barking up the wrong tree didn't know what was best for them in the first place, and desperately needed the wisdom and guidance of the anti-tree experts, therefore let today be known as Brevard County Tree Butcher Day. I'd like to present to you a beautiful trophy that was given to you by the citizens of Rockledge. And since I have 42 seconds left, I want to read this as well. Persuasive to the First Amendment to the Constitution and the Florida Constitution, 1838, Article 1, Section 5, that every citizen may freely speak, write, and publish his sentiment on all subjects, being responsible for the abuse of that liberty, and no law shall ever pass to curtail, abridge, or restrain the liberty of speech or the press. I am disgusted by the behavior happening in this boardroom. It is appalling, I'm watching it on TV, I'm watching it as I'm sitting in here, I don't know what has been happening, other than the fact, did you just stop by time?
Your time is up, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chris.
Kristin Lorti.
I believe I called for Kristin Lorti.
It is, they won't be speaking, they're simply supporting me, they're just standing. Can they please just stand?
Mr. Richardson.
That is not, please, you started my time.
Do you have a comment? Please.
Resolution to, you need.
Stop the clock for a minute.
Thank you.
That's within your discretion, control, as long as it doesn't become disorderal.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and allow this nonsense to continue, but go ahead and hold your signs up or whatever. Kristin, go ahead with your talk.
Thank you, Chairman Steele. I am here to read a resolution to the Brevard County Commissioners. I'm a concerned resident, I'm concerned about the Rockledge trees. The resolution states, whereas the Brevard County Commission has engaged in a multi-year dispute with the residents of Rockledge Drive, seeking to protect the legacy canopy trees along this scenic drive, and whereas the residents have disputed Brevard County's authority to destroy their property and negatively impact their quality of life, and whereas County Manager Frank Abate committed in 2021 to the residents to never cut the trees, and whereas on March 12th, 2024, Brevard County Commissioners took a vote to update the county road maintenance maps, and where Chairman Steele asked of Public Works Director Mark Bernath just prior to the vote, we are not going to go out there and start cutting down trees. And whereas, less than one month later, on April 9th, the Public Works Department and Commissioner Goodson's District 2 initiated an agenda item clearing the way for public works maintenance that included severe tree trimming of numerous canopy oak trees that are over 100 years old. And whereas, residents were notified by email only of the tree cutting on April 5th, just two business days prior to the item being presented, and without adequate notice to prepare for the agenda item, and where no commission vote was taken following the heavily orchestrated hearing. And whereas, starting on May 13th, the county began these severe tree trimming efforts, and which have mutilated and destroyed numerous canopy trees. And whereas, leading the way on the current 2024 destructive initiative have been Brevard County Attorney Morris Richardson, Public Works Director Mark Bernath, and Commissioner Tom Goodson, also owner of Goodson Paving. And whereas, the county actions have negatively impacted our environment, our community, state, and country's beautiful scenic America byway, now destroyed with the support of all five of the commissioners. Now therefore, be it resolved that numerous residents of Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim the five Brevard County Commissioners, Goodson, Pritchett, Tobia, Felton, and Steele, and county staff members Morris Richardson and Mark Bernath, the 2024 Tree Butchers of Brevard County. And we hereby encourage all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of the workings of the county commission that led to the destructive and unnecessary war against the residents of Brevard County, and deploying numerous methods of weaponization of the public business. It is requested that this resolution be included in the official records for the May 21st, 2024 County Commission meeting. Unfortunately, I didn't have a trophy, but I would certainly like that, like us all to appreciate, the one that was made, the 2024 Tree Butchers of Brevard, Brevard County. Are you proud of yourselves? You probably are proud of yourselves. We are ashamed.
All right. Thank you.
Very well, sir.
Nancy Simon.
Nancy Simon, Brevard, 2050, Rockledge Drive. We live in a county that many of us felt was paradise. We consider ourselves lucky. Beautiful parks with special events, Renaissance fairs, country music festivals, natural beauty, state and federal scenic road, and a responsive and caring government that actually listens to its constituents' opinions. But no more. I would like every one of you commissioners and the Department of Public Works to go out to this country's scenic route with their families and with before and after pictures of what it looked like two weeks ago, and say to your families, look what I have had done, cut down irreplaceable, centuries-old heirloom trees. Aren't you proud of me? I imagine they will have the same look of horror as the people I have seen walking on Rockledge Drive. Your legacy is one of destruction, of natural beauty, and history. When my grandsons and visitors ask me, what happened to the tunnel of beautiful trees? I can only answer, from a song called Paradise, "I'm sorry, my child, you're too late in asking. The Brevard Commissioners and Department of Public Works have chopped them away." I have here the start of a new painting and collage. I'll show the trees and road before and after, and what has been done. All names and conditions will be included in the history that will be shown. To go to the galleries all over New York and Florida, and to senators, governors, contraventionists, and activists all over the U.S. And yearly before any election, it will be handed to all the runners for office. Enjoy your legacy of destruction and infamy.
Thank you very much. All right, Board Reports. Commissioner, County Manager Frank Abate.
I have no report.
Commissioner Tobia, do you want to wait till you do yours at the end? Okay. Commissioner Felton, you have a report?
Do you want me to go first? If you're doing the recognition.
Don't worry about it, we're good.
Okay. We recognized a high school student today who'd graduated, and rightly so. She's, she's done well. Another student from Vera High School, friend of mine and somebody we all probably know. We know their parents, Sarah and Michael Ayers. Brayden is graduating, and I have a few things that I would read for him real quick. I wanted to do a resolution, but it's really not his way, so he, he sort of vetoed that. Brayden will graduate Vera High School with a weighted GPA of 4.5, and as an AP Scholar with distinction. Brayden has served in the JROTC program for the past four years, and this year, he served as executive officer. The team qualified for state his junior year and placed fifth. He has led teams of fellow JROTC members in missions, trainings, and events to inspire and bring about others' best efforts. Brayden has played on the Vera High School tennis team for the last four years, playing as line-one singles and doubles for the last three years. Brayden attended the West Point Summer Leadership Experience and the Naval Academy Summer Seminar as a junior, which is when he decided to focus his post-secondary efforts on the Navy. Brayden has accepted Congressman Bill Posey's appointment to the United States Naval Academy, and his studies there will emphasize math and science. He will likely work in nuclear submarine in the future. Brayden was recognized as a top scholar for, in Florida today, and this was voted on by his teachers and administrators. I've known this young man his entire life, and it's just amazing to see him move on and heading to the Naval Academy. So I think collectively, we're all very proud of him. And I congratulate his parents. It's, it's, it's an effort to help get a young person to this point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pritchett, do you have a report?
I just want to piggyback on that. We were able to go up to Lynchburg in Virginia. My grandson just graduated from Liberty. We're really proud of him, and it's a great college up there. When the COVID happened, the online stuff became very prevalent. I didn't say that right. Came a big deal. And so I was, it was just a lot of fun watching that. I also want to mention that I really thank the county staff and you guys, and, and all the work you do. And it's an interesting day with, with hot tempers, but the maturity from the staff and the way that everything's handled, and just doing what's best for the residents. I just really feel right now, at this moment, you guys need to hear, thank you so much for being good people. And I'm getting to talk to a lot of people in the community, and we have the best county ever. These people are wonderful. So be encouraged, and just know that there's more of you out there than there are of them. So good job.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Pritchett, for that. Commissioner Tobia, did you want to just wait till yours, or do you want to go ahead and do your report now?
It's up to you, I don't care.
You go ahead.
Okay. I'll, I'll start with, I passed out a letter, and let me tell you about the letter real quickly. The 2024 Florida Tax Watch Budget Turkey Watch Report was just released. This report includes $650,000 for the Cape Canaveral Light Station Reconstruction Phase Two. So let me tell you what the phase, this phase includes reconstruction of not even the main lighthouse keeper's cottage. That was Phase One. This is the first and second assistant lighthouse keeper's cottage. What is worse, it, it, it made it through both the House and the Senate with additional cottage alterations, which they claim will bring in tourism. The House Form also states this money will not even complete the project, and that separate funding will be necessary to furnish the exhibits. The question is, where is this money going to be coming from? I'm afraid it may come from, the request may be to us. This job, this, this museum does not create jobs, according to the Economic Impact Study done in 2017 for Phase One of the project. It was granted $500,000. It states that the museum will only have one employee. We're still at that number. The museum is not drawing tros of tourists in the application for the 2024 funding request. This museum states their latest data as 10,000 tourists annually to, to this museum. While the county isn't, while this isn't a county-funded, county-funded handout, we've done that in the past, it stills funded on the backs of Florida taxpayers, and I suggest, and this is what's unique here, governments send letters to the governor asking for things to be funded. I thought we'd do a little bit of a spin on this, and we would send a letter to the governor asking him to line-item veto this. I don't want to call it a turkey because someone else already called it a turkey. So this is no reflection of the hard work that Senator Mayfield and Representative Saroye, those were the two people that, I don't know how they put their name on this request, but, but they did. So my request would be for the board to sign a letter to send up to the governor. And the crux of this, I'll, I'll read you the, the center paragraph. As we move forward, with your, as you move forward with your duties as governor following the 2024 legislative session, the board would like to bring to your attention appropriations line number 3234, the Cape Canaveral Light Station Reconstruction Phase Two. This request for $650,000 is to reconstruct two lighthouse keeper assistant cottages at the Cape Canaveral Lighthouse Museum. Considering the average of less than 28 daily visitors, this board feels that the appropriation would be better allocated to address the ever-increasing insurance premiums. Again, I would, if you guys are not interested in, in sending this up, I sarcastically had another letter appropriating, just saying how instrumental this is to not only Brevard County, the state of Florida, but probably the world. But I'm not even going to put that one out here. But I wanted to see if I had any support here, sending a letter up to the governor saying, please do not fund this, this, this turkey.
Okay, Commissioner Goodson.
About the time, I like you. About the time I can deal.
Are you one of the 28 visitors of this darn thing?
Yes, yes, I am. But if you know anything about Tallahassee, we have funded so many barbecue grills for the Cubans in Miami, okay? Every year, there's a new barbecue for Bay of the Pigs. Why don't you just leave this alone, let this go through? Think about it, you can go out there one day when you're old, and sit on the bench and look at the cottages. Mr. Chair, we, we don't need to do this. Debbie Mayfield and Tyler have worked so hard, we need to get this money to Brevard County to help them, because every, they have begged for money throughout the years, John, they have.
Can I ask a question of Morris? Wouldn't this need to be under an agenda item?
Items such as this have been raised during board reports, but it is preferred that they be placed on an agenda if possible.
I mean, if, if, if the commission wants to do it, that's fine with me. Anybody have a motion to, to do this? Commissioner Tobia does.
I don't, I don't plan on, if, if there's not the sentiment here, I don't, I don't plan on bringing it up in a board, a board report. I mean, sorry, a, a. If we don't do this today, will you send the second letter to the governor? You, you don't want to see the second letter. You do not want to see the second letter.
All right, I'm going to have to have you guys removed from the room.
All right. I'm leaving.
You're ready, all right.
Okay.
You still got fire to do.
Okay, so there's no support there. I appreciate, I look forward to Phase 16 of this darn lighthouse project. Again, I guarantee you, we funded $500,000 for period-correct furniture. You will see a similar request. Okay, Board Report, National Take Your Parents to the Playground Day. That's kind of an interesting one. Now, here, let me tell you something, and I, I really appreciate, I want to, I was in the community, and I knocked on a door, and I spoke with someone that actually happens to watch our meetings. And she informed me that she was a little concerned with my titling useless Florida facts. She said many of the facts are kind of useful. And I said, I don't, can't, can't, can't argue with you there, so I am changing the useless to useful Florida facts, and I want to thank Dale Abrams for that. Sun tan lotion was invented in Miami. A Miami pharmacist, pharmacist invented the first modern sunblock, sun tan lotion during World War II. He later perfected this formula after the war, creating Coppertone brand in the process. So you're a useful Florida fact. This day in Florida history, the version of the Florida flag we use today is from 1985, when the artistic rendition of the seal was created. The previous rendition was approved in the year 1900, when the Red Cross was added to the background. So I did not know it was that recent. And I would want to thank Clerk and Comptroller Sadoff. She is the one, or blame her, one or the other of those two things. So I sent requests out to the constitutials, asking them who they were interested in recognizing, and I got back quite a list. So again, this is the clerk, not, not me. So the names here, and there are many of them, the first one would be a guy by the name of Frank Abate, he's County Manager, 34 years of service. John Denninghoff, Assistant County Manager, 27 years of service. Mark Bernath, Public Works, three and a half years, and the following facilities staff. So I want to go over those. Yes, many of them are back here. Again, thank you so much for all of the work, but I'm going to go over you guys. So you, you sat through this very exciting meeting, eventful meeting.
I did.
I'm going to start with Skip Bell, Facilities Manager, three years. Skip oversees the activities and supervisory of personnel with the facilities program, including Maintenance and Construction Division. Skip was born in Greece and spends his spare time as a taxi driver for his four kids. He relaxes night by turning wrenches on his motorcycle, classic Jeep, and classic Volkswagen. Doug Willetts, carpenter, 2.5 years. Doug has retired from his own construction and modeling business. He serves as top entertainers and athletes in Atlanta, Georgia. Doug is currently a carpenter in the facility's South area. While in reality, he fixes everything and does so with a smile. After-hours Doug enjoys skydiving, parasailing, woodworking, and golf. Scott Hanson, Facilities Maintenance Supervisor, 23 years. Scott manages the daily maintenance, repair, and personnel in all facilities, from Vera to Sebastian. Scott relaxes by sitting in his recliner and waiting for the next emergency after-hours call. He is always ready to respond at any hour. Jerry Richards, electrician, electrician one, 40 years. Jay started working Brevard County straight out of high school. This is the only job he has ever had. Boring resume. Jay is an electrician in the Facility North area, and knows where all the skeletons are hidden. Jay enjoys fishing on his boat, golfing, spending time with his beautiful wife. He has two certificates for separate holes in one, and a tortoise with, well, one day, one day will hopefully reach 200 pounds. Tom Horton, Facility Supervisor, seven and a half years. Tom is a U.S. Army veteran with six years as a Rota Wing Crew Chief. He currently is in the North Area Facilities Manager Supervisor. Tom enjoys saltwater fishing and stained glass craftsmanship. Mike McGrew, Facilities Manager, 27 years. Mike assists the Facilities Construction Manager with overseeing the six construction coordinators, and there are 177 active construction projects. Mike loves music like Tool and Pantera Soft. He travels all over the state to see as many shows as possible. He plans on seeing at least eight shows this year. Shay Graceman, Construction Coordinator, three months. Shay joined Facilities from the Rocket Factory. As a Construction Coordinator, she oversees all aspects of projects, from scope, development, planning, design, and construction. from scope, development, planning, design, and construction. Shay enjoys playing with her corgi, Spud, three chickens, in a monster truck-sized side-by-side. Miguel Gonzalez, General Repair Technician, 2 years. Miguel is originally from New York. As a Facilities North Area GRT, he repairs anything and everything. He also, he never says no and is always willing to learn new skills. Miguel enjoys bowling. On a clear day, he takes his mini motorcycle for a ride. Miguel is always searching for his next adventure. Rick Lyra, Plumber, 14 years. Rick serves as a communication soldier in the United States Army, then as a self-employed plumbing contractor in the Orlando area. Now Rick is a valued asset, taking care of North Brevard facility plumbing needs. Rick enjoys cruising and traveling. In spare time, he cooks, bakes, and plays with woodworking tools. Brian Casey, General Repairs Technician, 1 and 1/2 years. Brian maintains all aspects of facilities, supports all trades. He can often be seen keeping the water crystals clear in the reflection pond. While Brian repairs things during the day, at night, he tears it up on the racetrack. He has a fleet of school buses. He races on figure-eight tracks. Interesting. Jeanette Scott, last but not least, Contracting Supervisor, 17 and 1/2 years. Jeanette manages all bidding and contracting for Public Works Department, including facilities, roads, and bridge, and transportation, construction management. Jeanette's first job with Brevard County was a library page at Merritt Island Public Library, shoving books and materials. Jeanette grew up in Germany and relaxes to classical music, like Tool and Pantera. Guys, thank you so much. You do so much for us that we have no idea. I appreciate it.
Okay, Commissioner Felton, do you have another, do you have any more, Commissioner Felton?
No, that's it.
Okay, cool. You have another comment real fast?
At a prior meeting, we recognized a member from BCSO for their service, and today we have Lieutenant Scott Malino. Is it 30 years? Yes.
Scott, great. Thank you.
I also, on that note, want to recognize tomorrow's Commissioner Feltnor's birthday.
Ah, happy birthday, Rob. All right. You have no report. Morris, you got any report?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, briefly, this is weighing heavy on my mind, because I'll tell you what. I'm really getting sick and tired of what's happening in this room. And I'm going to ask Morris to draft me a memorandum in regards to removing people from the room. I just, the disrespect that we're getting from the audience is, in my opinion, way overboard. And if anybody here thinks I'm being too heavy-handed with removing some of these people, please let me know, but I'm not going to let this turn into a zoo in here. So, you know, if you've got any comments to me and you think I'm being too heavy-handed, please, I'll take constructive criticism. But I would like to ask Morris if he would prepare me a memorandum on what the proper procedure is for removing people from these rooms. It's the same 10 people every time. It's the same thing every time. And I'm not going to allow them to be rude to you, to be rude to Mark, to be rude to anybody that's done their hard work here. It's just not going to happen. So I'm sorry I lost my cool a little bit today, but I'll try not to very much anymore. So with that, the only other thing I have is that I've been requested by Housar Khumber and Stockton and Mayor Blake to, at some point in time, go to Washington to help them lobby the $49 million for the Bright Line Station. And of course, I mentioned it to Frank, and he suggested that I ask the board if I would have permission to travel with them to do that.
I'm good. It's in your budget, so, yeah.
Anybody got a problem? Commissioner Goodson?
I would just like for you to get the right number. I'd like you to talk to Sandra, is 74 or 49. I don't want you to go up there and not get enough.
Got it. I don't think I'll be talking to Sandra very much anymore.
Well, would you like me to intervene for you?
That would be great. Thank you so much. All right. Other than that, yes, sir?
We need to adjourn, but the board needs to go to executive session, so we need to handle that.
So what now?
We have an executive session.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah, but I think we have to adjourn, and then...
Yeah, okay, well, I hear a motion to adjourn.
Right, and this is not a litigation executive session, so it doesn't have a lot of the same formalities. You'll just adjourn the meeting, and this is notice to the public that we are going to adjourn upstairs to have a closed bargaining session on the union negotiations.
Okay.
10 minutes.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know, I'm thrilled to be able to leave tomorrow to go to France to see my wife, who I haven't seen for a long time. But I am completely available by cellphone, by email, and anything of that nature. So please don't hesitate to call me or text me or whatever. So county business, to me, is most important. So thank you very much for all your service.
Yeah, don't lose your cool on the airplane there.
No.
Put your, hey, Mark, 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 Mark.
Wait, who are you flying?
I'm flying Delta and then Air France. I can't afford those big ones like you.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.